Business side of the city, very much so. I enjoy the business side of employees.
You're not going anywhere. You're not going anywhere. You're still gonna be there.
I'm sorry, everyone back, proceed.
We're ready now.
Okay, you all ready to go? Okay, at this time, we're gonna resume the meeting of August seventeenth, twenty twenty. Councilor Lenore, do you see the flag of allegiance?
Yeah. Ladies and gentlemen, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, thank you, and move to the roll call.
Mayor Velasquez.
Here.
Councilmember Lenore.
Present.
Councilmember Resendez.
Here.
Vice Mayor Spencer.
Here.
Interim City Manager Brett Miller.
Present.
City Attorney Epperson.
Here.
Interim Police Chief Reynoso.
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The agenda for the City of Hollister City Council Regular Meeting of August seventeenth, twenty twenty, was posted on the bulletin board on August twelfth, twenty twenty, at five ten P M, per Government Code Section five four nine, five four point two.
Thank you. As City Attorney, will you please report out the closed session?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The report out of closed session is that the City Council discussing closed session, those items, agendas for closed session discussion and direction was given to staff. The City Council adjourned from closed session at six fifty-two P M. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. We're gonna move to the consent agenda. Are there any items the council would like to pull?
Not me.
Do we have any items the public would like to pull?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The City Clerk would like to pull item A two. And we have an item from the public, number A five, please.
Is there a motion?
Oh, I move that we approve the consent agenda outside of item number two and item number five.
Okay, there was a motion, is there a second? Is the motion second all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries, we're gonna move to item A two.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item and Council, item A two. There was a change on the August third minutes. There was a portion from item F seven, from the August third agenda and minutes, where the second motion was not placed onto the minutes. I have since made that change and would like to amend the agenda with those changes on there. I could read the changes to you if you'd like, because they, this, I just added it today. Would you like me to do that?
Go ahead.
City Attorney Epperson had requested that we make another motion or move on to the next item. Mayor Velasquez made a motion to extend the study from San Bonito Street to the edge of the city on Buena Vista, work with a traffic engineer to have a temporary stop sign at Gonzalez, and any other points that pose a dangerous situation, and have the engineers look at how they can have residents safely park, if possible, along the North Street portion. Councilmember Lamore commented that staff recommendation is not to have parking on a major collector street and your stop signs down there on Gonzalez. We should look at that before we put it up. We need to control the speed limit. What good is that road, then, for moving traffic safely? Mayor Velasquez stated that the temporary stop sign would need to be approved by a traffic engineer prior to placing it up, as with all traffic issues. The motion was seconded by Councilmember Resendez and then carried by unanimous vote. And that's the amendment I would make to the minutes.
Any questions from Council? Any speakers on this?
I have no speakers, Mr. Mayor.
Is there a motion?
Act-
I move that we accept that amendment to A two.
Is there a second? Motion second all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, we'll move to item A five.
Thank you. I don't know if he's online. Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item F five was pulled by Keith Snow, so I'm going to give him just a few minutes.
Item A five.
Eight five, I'm sorry, yes, I'm sorry, A five. Keith, can you hear us? Keith, are you there? Keith, are you there? I'm sorry, Mayor and Council. Is he, wait, is he unmuting right now? Oh, he is unmuted, he's just not saying anything. Keith, please go ahead.
Is there any other speakers on this side?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Is there a motion for A five?
I move that we- Go ahead.
I move that we adopt item A five from the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion second all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye, motion carries. We are gonna move on to public input. This is the time for anyone in the audience to speak on any item not on the agenda and within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. Speaker are available in the lobby and have to be completed and given to the city clerk before speaking. When the city clerk calls your name, please come to the podium, state your name and city for the record, and speak to the city council. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes, with a maximum of thirty minutes per subject. Please note this state law prohibits the city council from discussing or taking action on any item not on the agenda. Do we have any speaker cards?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. We have some hands up. I don't have any actual speaker cards. So I'm gonna call Rosa Vivian Fernandez. Rosa, can you hear us, please go ahead?
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Irene, I'm the Human Resources Director, and I will be speaking on behalf of the San Bernardino Health Foundation and Rosa Vivian Fernandez, our CDO. Good evening. We, at the San Bernardino Health Foundation, just wanted to extend a big thank you to the City of Hollister for their support with our local Feed the Frontline event that we held this Saturday on August fifteenth. It was held here at the San Bernardino Health Foundation, and it was actually one of two drive-through food distributions for our local community, and it was actually the finale event of our week-long National Health Center Week celebration. Our two-hour event was actually hosted from four to six P M, and with the participation of the San Juan Rotary Club, San Juan Batista, El Teatro Campesino, Hollister Super, Taylor Farms, the Community Food Bank of San Bernardino County Grocery Outlet, and the Mission Cafe. We also would like to mention and say a huge thank you to Alejandro Bologna, who was representing the Concilado of Mexico, based out of San Jose, and Caleb Power, representing the Office of Rob Rivas. The event that we had on Saturday actually reached more than four hundred families. And in total, for the week, we saw a reach of participants from one thousand and seven, one thousand seventy-eight participants, resulting in eight hundred and twenty-two children, eight hundred and twenty-two adults, a hundred and sixty children, and a total of five hundred and sixty-three vehicles. So, as the participants joined us for Saturday, we, they were provided by entertainment from local musicians from Teatro Campesino. They played for the duration of the event through a contact-free setting, where they were able to receive an assortment of fresh produce, dried goods, and that was all loaded directly into their trucks. There were hot burritos and bottled waters that we provided to all participants who attended, as well as the distribution of masks with instructions on how to use them, and that was given to each attendee that came. Many of the participants were incredibly thankful and extremely excited, and this endeavor definitely could not have been accomplished or achieved without the work and support from a lot of the community members. So on behalf of the San Bernardino Health Foundation, and again, on behalf of Rosa Vivian, we just wanted to extend a huge thank you for your support.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next speaker.
Next speaker, Casey Mia, or Mia Casey, I'm sorry. Mia, can you hear us? Please go ahead. Mia, please go ahead.
Hi, this is Mia Casey, good evening. I live in Hollister. I'm speaking tonight about what's going on in Hollister with regard to the state's protection of the growth management plan that the council approved last fall. There was a letter dated May twelfth that the state instructed our city to withdraw ordinance eleven eighty-three that approved that plan. And during a June meeting, the council discussed the state letter, and according to the minutes, the council decided by consensus for the city to go back and ask for further clarification from the state. There was to be follow-up discussion at the August third meeting regarding whether to appeal the ordinance. However, nothing, I didn't see anything on the August third agenda, and there's nothing on tonight's agenda. Apparently, a letter was received back from the state on July twenty-ninth. However, there's been no mention of it at council meetings or discussion of any further action. Recent Benito League article talks about this July twenty-ninth letter stating the city's been given thirty days to comply. This morning on social media, Mr. Mayor, I asked you why this letter hasn't been made public, and you alluded that there were lawsuit threats by developers, and told me that, quote, "When lawyers go back and forth, it is not public record until things get settled," unquote. The letter was not supposed to be, was just supposed to be clarification of questions. We often litigation the state, and a letter from the state to the city is public record and should not be withheld. I'm requesting this letter be made public for transparency's sake. That Benito League article further states, quote, "Velasquez said that Jason Epperson, the city's attorney, was replying to the July twenty-ninth letter and asking about the annexation issue. I'm curious as to when and how Mr. Epperson was instructed to further reply to the state. It was not done openly at any council meeting. Was there consensus of the council for him to further pursue this matter? I would hope the mayor didn't unilaterally direct this further action. I don't believe that's within his authority to do so. I would love to have some further clarification on how that further action happened. I understand a desire to fight the state over this decision. However, many cities have fought against the growth mandate, like Morgan Hill. They lost. And we don't have time or resources right now to fight a losing battle. And given the state of our budget with looming revenue shortfalls due to COVID- nineteen, we should be seeking to avoid further lawsuits. I implore this council to be reasonable, use common sense, and please, add this item to the agenda as soon as possible and repeal the ordinance so we will be in compliance with the state. To do otherwise is foolhardy. Thank you."
Courtney Evans. Courtney, go ahead.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Perfect, thank you so much. My name is Courtney Evans, I own a business in downtown Hollister. This is my sixth time speaking at Public Comment to ask the board to place on the agenda and to implement moral and ethical codes. The word politician and representatives in our society today comes with very bad connotations. The social media presence that are, some of our council has is embarrassing, and it leaves us to question their professional responsibility with representation, with an ethical foundation. I'm, I'm sorry?
I said, go ahead, I'm back calling whoever this is, who's this?
He wasn't, oh, that's good.
Oh, Lord.
Okay, well, start her over, she needs to start over with three minutes.
Now, go ahead and finish whatever, whoever's speaking, let him finish.
Well, I'd like to start over.
Go ahead, Courtney.
I'm directly speaking to you, sir, so I would love for you to hear everything that I'm saying.
Who is this?
Please start over, Courtney. Courtney, please start over.
Yeah, she is.
Thank you very much. I'm calling for the sixth time to this council to request a moral and ethical code be implemented and an agenda item be placed. The word politician in today's society has come with very bad connotations, especially with the disgusting behavior of some of these council members. It is a dilemma for your constituents, that we, it is very important that we see you deal this with professional responsibility. It is a political ethics are very important to us, because we are the constituents, and we are in a very vulnerable position. The people whom we elect as public office will ultimately have governmental power over us. Therefore, if we want to know who's representing us to display these certain moral and ethical values, then we, the public, have the obligation to provide a certain thought-out standard for your conduct. The conduct is unbecoming and not a true representation of the people of this community. Over and over again, week after week, I hear people calling in and speaking about, about their, um, um, about their questions in regards to the conduct and not being transparent with the public. So I am again requesting that there be moral and ethical standards that this board adheres to, and that there is a way to track and trace the behaviors of our elected officials. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you hear me? Am I still there?
Yes, we can hear you.
You're aware, there is an ethics code that every council member is aware of, and it's given, it's there again. Who's the next speaker?
Keith Snow. Keith, are you there? Can you, go ahead, Keith. Keith, go ahead.
Do you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Well, my name is Keith Snow. And right, and one thing, and not island things, but like what you said before, by the deals, I'm there, I'm money spent to do the council, but gasoline, it does not get long. It's right that, uh, via, 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 the, the, the newspaper, right? And that could cool, could cool, either there, and we're missing, but this is, I listen to you about how awful, I'm talking on the phone, just like email you, I know, but as with the computers, I do, I do pay websites, ask money, they're like, on the agenda, I missed that part, twin, twin downloads, for P G N E. And right, and what about that? Not bought, but spread it on the agenda, I, I, I'm talking on that foreign chatter. This is a horrible, you can't try see, how can be transparent, we're not transparent. We, we support, we, the, the, the taxpayer, and, and I lived for nine years. I'm at the council, I see the manipulative, manipulative tactics, club question, they can none. Hadn't had a lawsuit, uh, the carry, you know, my, my Harvey carry, he spent for war bill, you know, my war bill dollars, turn, turn all the months, just the same, highest ever D labor, they, they know, know, for a husband. It's horrible. You got to leave the city as leaders, but you got to payers. If you, if you start to, to pay, Mr. Brad Miller over there, why not? Read it, check yourself, get all the waste spending, all the, all the, I, I, the summits, and the, and the lawyer over there, Jason, Jason, a criminal, who had the power there. I do law firm, what's with that part? See, all the things, service, I think the people, I just for, for political consensus, that tell things, and they link, they link, and, and making that like a fire, a fire went too. They like, like it's into me. And then we, we, we too, that's a, with the policy, with, with that work for, for this for, for somebody else. They knew that I was doing that here. But it's hard for me.
Thank you, Mr. Snow. Thank you, Mr. Snow.
Thank you.
Next speaker, Sal Mora. Sal, please go ahead.
Yes, good evening, Mr. McPrin City Council. I hope you guys are all doing well. I'd like to speak regarding the article that Mia Casey also spoke about. You, after reading the article, are very disturbed. You, after reading the article, are very disturbed. It was very disturbing what, what I read, especially the part where it said that Mayor Velasquez stated that Jason Epperson, the city attorney, was replying to the Housing and Community Development's July 29th letter and asking about the annexation issue. Problem is, is that the HCD gave the city of Hollister 30 days to reply, to respond regarding the situation that they found the housing element illegal. Not to entertain other questions or get clarification. We have 30 days to, to let the Housing and Community Development know that we are suspending immediately and not, not following the housing element of our growth management ordinance. Yet we do not immediately suspend the housing element of the growth, uh, management ordinance, uh, plan. Well, the city is going to be fined, not a lawsuit filed against it. Because the law states that there are fines, which I, which I stated last time. The law does not state that there will be a lawsuit filed. If, if a developer chooses to file a lawsuit separately, that's something different. And, and I'm just curious as to what Mr. Epperson, what ongoing lit, ongoing litigation he is referring to when he refused to comment to Benito League on August 14th. The public has not heard about any, any litigation filed against the city. So I, I'm just, just because people have possibly threatened or spoke of lawsuits does not prevent our city attorney or council members from speaking on, on certain items. If that was the case, we never would have had any discussions when our own mayor publicly threatened to file a lawsuit over the 400 block issue. So that is completely false and not an accurate statement. It, it's disappointing that our own city attorney is not being very honest and forthcoming. I find that very troublesome and definitely should be addressed i- in the near future. Possibly means we may have to get a new city attorney. We need to follow, unfortunately, we need to follow the law. We ask our citizens to follow laws. We must do the same as city leaders. We may not like the laws. I do not like the state telling us how we have to grow. I do not like that. I agree that if the state is going to mandate us to have to grow with housing, they should give us money.
Thank you, Mr. Mora. Thank you, Mr. Mora. Your time is up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker.
I have no more speakers, Mr. Mayor.
This time we're going to move to...
I'm sorry, I do have one from the audience, Elia Salinas.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council members. I have been sitting here in the audience for more than a year, listening to Courtney Evans come up and ask for the board to come up with an ethics, uh, rules, policies. We also, we have the FPPC that we're supposed to buy by. We have Roberts Rules. We have the Brown Act. And today, the mayor decides to answer Courtney by saying that we already have an ethics policy. She's asked six times, and I believe she's also emailed the council asking for this. She should have been told that a long time ago. And every single council member sitting up there or out there in Zoom behind a picture or no name, because part of the FPPC rules state that you must show your face to confirm to the constituents that you are paying attention to them. You're not aware that there's ethic policies. Obviously, I can, I can personally tell you that Roland Rosendres and the mayor Ignacio Velasquez have not followed the ethics policies because they break it all the time. There is, was reason for, uh, Rosendres to get censured because he did not follow ethics policy. And it's quite shameful that today, the mayor says that there is something that he should have shared it with Rosendres so the Rosendres could be following that policy. The mayor does not have the power to direct any city staff on anything. It must go through the city council. So if there is reason for Jason Epperson to follow through on some July 29th letter, he must have been directed by the city council and not by the mayor. And that needs to come up on an agenda item so that that can be discussed as soon as possible. Because again, that is a violation of ethics policies and FPPC rules, the Brown Act and Roberts Rules. All but combined up together. And you, Mayor Velasquez, are a genius at breaking ethics policies.
Thank you. I have no more speakers, Mr. Mayor.
Very clear ethics codes are been out there and been explained several times in public. Why or how people are acting as if this is new, is beyond me. I've said it many a times. So we're going to go and move on to the next item, D1, St. Madras Report.
Yeah, I think I will send Courtney Evans the council policy that we, we have currently. Nothing else to report.
Thank you, Brett.
We're going to move on to item D2.
With COVID, nothing at this current, current time for trainings and conferences.
We'll move on to E1, public hearing, item one, D1.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, you have before you a request for amending Chapter 6, animals as it relates to mandatory microchipping of dogs and cats. But to provide further information, we have Supervisor for Animal Control, Kara, will do the presentation.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. Good to see you all. Today, I'm here on behalf of the Hollister Police Department and Animal Care and Services to propose an ordinance for mandatory microchipping of dogs and cats that are impounded at the shelter for a second time. This would require that any animal that's been in our care one, more than once, excuse me, to be microchipped by the staff before their release. This is in an effort to free up space in the shelter for the strays that truly need the room and to allow these animals to be quickly reunited with their owners.
Do you have any questions?
Is there any questions? Are you done with your presentation?
Yes, that is all.
Is there any questions from the council?
Um, I don't have a question, just that I think this is a great ordinance and I stand behind it. As an animal owner, I'm a very responsible animal owner. My dog is chipped and fixed, does not leave my front door without being on a leash. I think every person in this community that owns an animal should be as responsible. Great ordinance.
I have a comment. I, I do, I do, just for the sake of the public. Yes, thank you. Uh, just, I'll agree. You know, you may not see it important as microchipping, but it could work to your advantage. We love our pets and then they get fireworks and they're gone. And then somebody finds them and they turn them in. So, you know, and I, I'm sure everybody agrees. It might be a little bit, the owners might not like it, but I think overall, it's a, it's a great program for the safety of the animals. We know, we are really charged with the safety of animals. They are at the mercy of the human owner. So we should, should do this to keep the animals safe. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions, comments from council? This time we will open public hearing for the public. Do we have any speakers?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have one speaker.
Go ahead.
Keith Snow. Keith, go ahead. Keith, go ahead. Is he muted on his side? Keith, go ahead. Okay, sorry.
I, I was there, I said, I want to give my dog a trip too. That's a good idea. Uh, Keith somewhere down long, so someone, I'm just got to tip your dog to the county. It's silly. How is this a class?
That's a different question. We're talking about, uh, those are at the shelter that are going to be tripped. You can call the shelter and get that answer, sir.
And, and the other one before the lawsuit, I just give me a nap, for me end up on that war. Do you know I can talk about that?
No, we're talking about this tripping at the shelter.
I know, I know, I've been skipping that, I want to know that. And that fair. I'm doing a thing, I'm doing, but just give me next time. And then we go right, says, well, my god, you're right, stop on the mirrors. My city county, this is for. I want to know that. I know that it's given before, not right.
Mr. Snow, do you have a question about this item? Any, any other questions?
No, I, 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 I'm going to tell it to you. I want to my animal gone tomorrow.
Okay, just want to make sure. Thank you. Do you have any other speakers?
We have no more speakers, Mr. Mayor.
This time we'll close public hearing. And any other questions or comments from council?
I, I, I do. I have a question.
Go ahead.
I, I was a little bit confused on the recommendation. Usually, we have the, like, first reading, but we're amending, we are amending and existing, we're making an addition to an existing ordinance. So it doesn't require the second public hearing? No, really, we waive the full reading and we, we move it on to the next hearing for adoption.
We are adding a section to a chapter.
So it's different?
Yes, so it does, it does not exist in our mini-code at this time. We are adding this section to our Chapter 6 of our titled Animals to our mini-code.
So it's a different process than the brand-new ordinance?
It's, it's like a brand-new ordinance, yeah, but it's being, it is a new ordinance adding a section for microchipping.
So no second reading required?
Second reading is required.
Oh, so we are going to reschedule it for a second reading?
So this is the first reading.
Because the report just doesn't say that, so, that's cool. That's what I thought.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor, it's, uh, Carlos Reynoso. I just wanted to, if I could just add, I think that, just to cover and just to make sure that the public understands, it's the cost associated with this is very reasonable. Kara, if you can elaborate what the cost is?
The cost per microchip is just $15.
So it is, it is very reasonable for responsible pet owners. And, and then there's things that could be done even if that was an issue, so.
I just meant procedural wise.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Is there a motion?
I make a motion that we accept, uh, ordinance, or we waive, we waive the reading and introduce an ordinance of the city of Hollister amending Chapter 6 animals, adding Section 6.08.125.
There's a motion, is there a second?
A second?
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, good work from Kara. We're going to move on to item E2.
Thanks, Kara.
Good evening, just wanted to make sure everyone can hear me.
Yep, we can hear you. Orelli, go ahead.
Great. And so staff is requesting to amend miscellaneous sections of Title 17, zoning of the Hollister Municipal Code to ensure internal consistency regarding where cannabis facilities may be permitted by conditional use permit as already intended by the code in the North Gateway, West Gateway, Light Industrial, Industrial Business Park, and Airport Support zoning districts. The proposed amendments assure internal consistency of land use designations that have been previously approved. On June 17th, 2019, council adopted ordinance 1179, which amended Chapter 542 Cannabis Facilities Regulatory Permit of the Hollister Municipal Code. At the June 25th, 2020 Planning Commission meeting, the Planning Commission adopted PC Resolution 2020-11, which recommended to the council adoption of the amendments to Title 17 zoning of the Hollister Municipal Code. Uh, the proposed amendments to Title 17 will identify and ensure consistency with the land use designations where cannabis facilities may be permitted by conditional use permit. All of the allowed uses in the cannabis ordinance are being added to the appropriate zoning tables in Title 17 to make sure that the code is clear and consistent between Title 5 and Title 17. Um, staff would like to make the council aware that the Planning Commission made a motion to amend Section 542, 170, subsection C, to define qualified patient. However, amendments to Chapter 542 were not brought for recommendation or properly noticed at the June Planning Commission meeting. And staff would like direction of council wishes to proceed with making this change at a later time. Tonight, it is the recommendation of staff that you hold a public hearing, read by title only, waive the reading, and introduce an ordinance of the city of Hollister, amending miscellaneous sections of Title 17 zoning of the Hollister Municipal Code, and schedule a second reading and adoption of the ordinance for the September 8th, 2020 city council meeting.
Are you done, Orelli?
She's done.
That concludes my presentation.
You're muted, Mr. Mayor?
Can you guys hear me? I'm sorry.
Yes, we can hear you.
This time, just open it to the public, item E2. Do we have any speakers?
Keith Snow? Keith, go ahead.
There, Keith Snow, at, okay, Mr. Mayor, then one. And here you got the vote, all the, the, all the ones that are active, not that, right? I want remain this, can Mr. Brad Miller, can the dollars? Can't ready, uh, first, dog goes down, so, so we can walk back, right? Then also, we permit, uh, and they see from the tax on their lot. They say you know, laws and there are reasons, but you know, if you don't know, or reasons. Like, wait, this guy, dollars, why can't RC guy, semi, guy sell to be, or, or being the horse a year? Marijuana, what's, what's up that? Why can't you calculate or the, unless, you know, for business for, you're not marijuana city. Long as them, the kids don't get it, right?
Here, question, no, do you have a question on this item?
I, I know.
Not that you own marijuana, but I.
But enough for, for fact, there's been to go strides, uh, still with the author. They don't get, stress. Tell me the diesel, right, or try candy.
No, sir, again, do you have a question about this particular item?
I'm not, I'm not, I'm saying I want answers. As first said, there is not, don't have that more, like you. Right, when we, when, when with the means, people were, uh, marijuana campus on the city. We had no knowledge of it. We had not all knowledge of it, right? Like, what's going to be more to say about our deals? I'm saying, we're, we're, it's all covered up, right? Has been seen here for a year, a campus for a year.
We have to be specific to the item on this agenda.
I know, but I, I work.
Not that you just have a conversation about marijuana to speak.
I know, but.
Have a question about. If not, we have to move on, Kara.
Well, if we had to move on, you guys move back.
We're, we're talking about this item. Do you have a specific question concerning?
I, 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 I went, I went, I went to paper, this, what, what, just. Because they like ignore all that, quit while best question, the answers. I know, I know that people, they would see, remain this marijuana, and did your strategy, but to go.
Okay, Mr. Snow. Mr. Snow, I'm sorry, but we're going to have to head off. If you don't mind, I'll just, this is how we, we'll have a conversation on marijuana.
Okay, okay, nice.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any other speakers?
There are no other speakers, Mr. Mayor.
This time, we're going to close public hearing, take it back to the council. Does the council have any comments or questions?
No.
Is there a motion?
I, I make, I move that we accept the recommendation of staff to waive the full reading and introduce ordinance number 1194, amending sections Title 17 zoning of the HMC and schedule a second reading and adoption of, of the ordinance for September 8th, 2020 city council meeting.
Thank you. Is motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All right. Any opposed? Motion carries? Four oh, we'll move to item E three.
Maria, go ahead.
Good evening, um, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. My name is Maria, I am the Cannabis Affairs Manager within the Development Services in the City of Hollister. The item before you tonight is for the approval of a cannabis use permit. And development agreement for Hollister Holistics Two to operate a cannabis delivery facility, non-storefront retailer at eighteen oh two Shelton Drive. Wanted to. Over a few of the, a little bit of background for the applicant's request. Our ordinance allows a permitted cannabis business to, to operate this kind of facility. This approval again would be for a non-storefront retailer that would allow the licensee to sell cannabis goods to customers exclusively through delivery. A non-storefront retailer must also have a licensed premises like I stated before. To store the cannabis goods for delivery. The applicant already has a permitted distribution facility and manufacturing facility at the same property of eighteen oh two Shelton Drive. The premises of a non-storefront retailer should not be open to the public. The delivery of cannabis or cannabis products and goods should only be between the hours six A M and two P M. To people or citizens over the age of twenty-one. And may operate as many as seven days per week. All delivery customers must provide a valid proof of identification. And Hollister Holistics Two is proposing to add at least five employees to this component of its business and start off with one car for its deliveries. With that said. Staff recommends that the city council hold a public hearing and adopt a resolution approving the cannabis conditional use slash development agreement. For a conditional use permit twenty twenty oh one for Hollister Holistics Two. Thank you.
Thank you, is there any questions from the council?
It, it, the eighteen oh two, is that the same address as the, the one Genesis? Same building? Thank you, that's my question, thank you.
Is there any other questions or comments from council? This time we will open it to the public, the public hearing. Do we have any speakers?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Carl Sailing.
Hello, can everybody hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, please go ahead.
We can.
Thank you. Hello, city council and mayor, good evening. My name is Carl Sailing and most of you know me as the CEO of Hollister Cannabis Co. The first licensed and active cannabis business here in Hollister. I'm speaking today to urge you to approve resolution number twenty twenty one five nine. Approving a conditional cannabis use permit development agreement for Hollister Holistics Two to operate a cannabis delivery facility. For clarification, I am also CEO of Hollister Holistics Two. And we are looking to create a new business to buy safe and compliant cannabis deliveries to the residents of Hollister and the surrounding cities. Our new delivery service would have a full and complete menu of products and not just the products that we manufacture in our other business. During these times, there are many people that would prefer not to potentially be exposed to COVID nineteen, would prefer a safe experience at their home. But there are also many consumers that have compromised immune systems and cannot risk going out, and a delivery service would be their best option. We have very strict protocols on how we will deliver. We sanitize every single order before leaving our facility. And our drivers will do a complete sanitation process before and after every single delivery, ensuring the best we can, providing a COVID nineteen free experience. We're also working on a contactless payment system so there's absolutely no contact. Apparently, there's not an official Hollister delivery service, and we would be proud to be the first company with that honor. Also, over the past two years of operations, we have proven that we are great neighbors to the city. And the City of Hollister is very important. We want to continue to be of support to the city and its residents, which I am one of them. We are professionals and will operate in a safe and always compliant manner, and I thank you for your support.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any other speakers?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Keith Snow? Keith? Go ahead.
Want that, all the other was remain this, there's remain this there? Two, three, did the council other?
You have a question, sir?
No, my, my question is, that once, or to be first, first club, I say can't operate. But for fact is more than that. One plus another one? Semi, semi campus, another one? All kinds of ones. And another one too, on the, on the one, the government last year came out, went to, when they are operating, that I have been operating. Right, I'm, I'm for the, for the people, pure that, but.
Do you have a question, I'm sorry, Mr. Snow.
No, no.
We have to be focused on the item. I want to make sure you understand clearly that.
About what I said too.
Literally, not your.
Literally, I want, I want to one that said to you. You guys are attached, see can, right? And more, you know, I know, facts, right? Not fiction. And you guys, where talent is, is Murray, my highest canvas, helps in all, not says, to me, weren't, weren't, weren't that not mean all year? What you want, to be known here? Or so me, and I, some things, these clubs, and I have a holistic class, right? But then I give no answers, remain this over there, people having the, the, what, what the one happened, marijuana. I want to be, been so secure, what be the check, and they weren't honest to people, that people need. Be, be a handicap, be stable, at cancer, at diabetes. Like money before, right, people that sit there. Right, we need that, right? Where have been once the people, we just got to do for you, to say, you know, nothing but the color, the color before. I've been the needs people, which.
Mr. Snow, we're not, we're not questioning that.
I'm not bothering, I'll get to the question.
We understand.
I'm happy about that, once you have to, for charge, him goes operating, now one. God said one call, one before, an operating. And Miss, Miss Ray Mendez there? Cancel, once you ask question, answer to me. Is seeing like I missed things, America, some city, county, and then nothing was operating. How can you calculate, never to mind you making, not making things toward that, for example, he said two million dollars, two million dollars, chance to make active over there.
Thank you, Mr. Snow, your time is up, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Snow.
I have no more. Speakers, Mr. Mayor. I have no more speakers.
Yeah, no more speakers. This time we will close public hearing on this item. Is there any other questions or comments from council?
No.
Is there a motion?
I make a motion that we accept resolution number twenty twenty one fifty-nine, a resolution of the city council of the City of Hollister approving a conditional cannabis use permit, deliveryment, development agreement for Hollister Holistic Two. To operate a cannabis delivery facility at eighteen oh two Shelton Drive.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Against? Motion carries four oh, we'll move to item E four.
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, staff, sorry, staff would like to ask for this item to be withdrawn, we are still in conversations with recology and we have not come to a solution as of right now.
It is.
Is there any questions from the council?
Yes. I, I wondered if it's appropriate to mention that I think there's more needed garbage collection downtown since we have the outside dining. Is that something you might discuss with them because I see the garbage all piling up and the cans need to be emptied, maybe a little more regularly, I just wanted to bring that up.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
No problem.
Thank you.
Thank you. Because it is listed on the agenda, we will now open it to the public for a public hearing. Do we have any speakers?
I have no speakers, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, there's one, honey.
I didn't see it. When I looked at you, you didn't have your hand up, Elia, so please go on up.
You missed it. Love that plastic, right?
Hi, I don't know where you all are in the negotiations, city staff, but I do understand that the item will be brought back to the San Benito County Board of Supervisors' agenda on September twenty-second. So I'm hoping that you are also in communication with the board or with the county staff as well. So that we can all move forward on this, and you all know that this is a big pet, pet peeve of mine. To make sure that we don't get the rate increases and hopefully we get some kind of a stay. The economy is getting worse than it was when we, when I first started discussing this, it's gotten worse and it's not gonna get any better. So I'm hoping that the negotiation goes towards what's in the best interest of all the citizens of Hollister, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Elia.
Do we have any other speakers?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. We have Keith Snow. Keith, go ahead. Keith, go ahead.
Keith, it looks like you're on mute.
Keith? Keith, go ahead.
Keith, can you please unmute yourself?
Here he goes.
Do we have any other speakers?
Um, yes, Sal Mora, Sal, go ahead. Sal, go ahead.
Yes, I'm here now. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and city council. I'd just like to give acknowledgement towards recology for engaging with the city, county of San Benito. In negotiating, potentially reducing or even possibly even staying the rate increase. I think it shows that they do listen to the community in public, not just, you know, I know a lot of people didn't send in their opposition forms, so it's good that they listened to the community who spoke out. And hopefully, we're able to come to an agreement that benefits everyone, you know, these are definitely tough times, we know we could potentially hit, hit even harder times with people's incomes. And, and with economies being so shaky. I just want to acknowledge the company for not pressing and imposing the contract agreement. I just want to say thank you to them and thank you for, with Brett Miller, for holding those discussions.
Do we have?
I have no more speakers, Mr. Mayor.
This time we will close public hearing. Is there any comments or questions from council?
I, I have a comment, since it's appropriate to do it now, and, and Mr. Morris spoke, but I just want to remind folks that we entered into a business contract. This was defined in the contract, so I'm struggling, I'm struggling with the default on the contract. Where I, I, I sympathize where some folks are coming from, and I certainly don't want a higher cost of living, but I'm not sure, I'm not sure we can breach our contract, so we'll wait to see what, what's the recommendation, but just to be honest, I want you to know that that's on my mind. Thank you so much.
State manager, again, what did you need for tonight?
We are requesting that you withdraw this item.
Is there a move to withdraw this item?
Are we gonna continue to date certain?
Item number.
E, E four?
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Honor seconded.
Honor did second, motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. We're gonna move to item F one.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Bob Martindel Campo, Hollister Fire. Resolution twenty twenty one sixty-one is a request for proposal for public safety, which consists of animal control, code enforcement, the police department and the fire department. To have a development of a master plan. This master plan serves as a roadmap for public safety to address future growth in the community, which consists of a variety of, of growth patterns such as industry, technology, population, retail, agriculture, and so on. This master plan will identify potential growth and its various calls for service as it pertains to public safety. Because it's a multifaceted, multidisciplined master plan, I'm, I'm, I'll be speaking first on this, and if you have any other questions, the other department heads that I spoke of earlier can answer questions also, but that concludes my presentation on the request for proposal for the master plan.
Thank you, sir, do we have any questions from council?
Yes. For Brett, for Brett, please, is there's no financial impact when you hire a professional to do the study?
This is authorized the release for a request for proposal.
Authorized the release for request, we're gonna do a request for proposal.
Correct.
So, all right, no financial impact with that.
Not yet, Bill.
I just didn't read that, I guess, right? Thank you. So we're not there yet.
Not yet.
Is there any other questions from council? Do we have any speaker cards?
One, no speaker cards, but I have Keith Snow. Keith, go ahead.
Keith, take it, did that, about combo, how, how, how much we spend for master planning? How, how much in the bushing, is God's city, the consultants? How much money rates and waits on this? As someone could think that to feel, and then doing pain, spare share, walk back, one went to hot, hot, hot board, maybe walk back years ago. I'm not going on track, but for practice, I think you can answer this, right? And you know, you know, by Tiffany, but the rumors, as long as all this movement in the house will be built. She's a, all that develop that not to us. In a day, in a day, we're buying all this, but I'm still thought that fear. And once master planning, how much you spend more money, the soldiers, to master plan, and don't cast a figure, person that master planning, told the great shit, compromise. How's the cost that's fair? Ask my, I'm, so are we even or negative? Right, and when I told me, we're, we're just under budget, city under budget, I told us county, how's but are they under? I mean, let's get down to numbers. The cost, like you said, at dollars, values. Value of being a leader, 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 county, we had to be more, of, of openness for the people. But combo, once you look into actually, you may on the part of the arson. Once at the grill, you know, the west half of big, that, that thing, all that, that you know thing, what is arson? I mean, the party like, but fear. Now, now, I said it, a truth. This belongs to. This is more also openness. When this have, yeah.
Between, please.
This have, yeah, I, I, this have worked up.
This is not, this is not very much.
Can I do, can I do a workup?
This is not a time. This is a time to ask for this item and this item only, not about asking questions.
It's about the money, it's about the money, are we, are we naked or, we did this, we did negotiation before, San Benito, fire, fire, and a piece, and all that, once, right? When the cities people were, I'm seeing the back of, I see the, yeah, please, she was all right, pieces, what, back, back on, fire chief, right? And Charlie, Charlie, guy, another one, coming in the, in the mix, right? What they tap in, right? Big fires downtown. I'm down, I'm committed, are we making, are we?
Thank you, Mr. Snow. Thank you, Mr. Snow.
Your time's up.
Your time is up.
Just, just so we're all clear on this item. Mr. Snow and everyone else, when you do request to speak, it has to be concerning the item on the agenda, and it's not about a time to just speak about anything you want to speak about. This item here allows for a study to be done, so we can raise the impact fees or the rates that need to be paid for different fees, make sure we're correct and not undercharging or overcharging, make sure expenses are covered. Thank you. Do we have any other speakers?
I have no more speaker cards, Mr. Mayor.
Is there any questions or comments from council?
No.
Is there a motion?
I move that we adopt resolution number 2020-161 as presented.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. We'll move to item F two.
Good evening again, Mayor, Council members. Resolution 2020-162 is a resolution for the city, uh, city council to allow the fire department to accept a FEMA assistance to firefighter supplemental grant for COVID-19. In May, we came to you requesting permission to apply for the grant, and we had a real short fuse, I think it was about a two, two-week window to apply for this. I had our assistant to the fire chief apply for it, she did it within 72 hours, and we were awarded over $10,000 for supplemental equipment to staff our personnel for COVID response. What this resolution requests is us to go ahead and accept the money from FEMA, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, sir. Any questions from council? Do we have any speaker cards?
I have no speaker cards, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion on this item?
I make a motion that we accept resolution number 2020-162, a resolution of the city of Hollister, the city council of the city of Hollister, accept the FEMA fiscal year 2020 COVID-19 supplemental.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you, Chief.
For a vote, we'll move to item F three.
Yes, we can hear you, Eva.
Perfect. Thank you. My name's Eva, I'm with the planning department. And item F three, you've seen before, this item was continued to this meeting tonight from the August third meeting. This is a resolution approving an annexation agreement between the city of Hollister and Alana Moreno, for property located north of Onavista Road. And this property was pre-zoned at the September 3rd, 2019, city council meeting with ordinance 1182, and the environmental document, a mitigated negative declaration was adopted by the city council at the August 19th, 2019, city council meeting. And so this item is again for the annexation agreement, and staff would recommend that the annexation, for the annexation agreement be approved by the city.
Thank you. Is there any questions from council?
No.
Nope.
Is there any speaker cards on this item?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Hugh Bickel? He's in the audience, so give him just a second.
Could we do the attorney first? You know, her presentation? Is that possible?
Sure. Christine Kemp?
Then I can speak to, if you have any questions, I can answer them for you.
After.
Christine Kemp, go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Christine Kemp, and I'm speaking on behalf of Hugh Bickel. Can you put up?
Give us just a moment, please, Christine.
I'm just going to wait for the PowerPoint to get up. I know it can take longer than the three minutes, but I would be speaking to items F three and F four, so if I'm over a little bit, I'll take that off the F four time. Thank you. Again, Christine Kemp, on behalf of Hugh Bickel, regarding the Woodall property annexation. Next slide. I want to reiterate that the state housing law mandates that your city council follow staff's recommendation and approve the Woodall annexation agreement and initiate the LACCO annexation proceedings. Next slide. The provisions of the recently adopted SB 330 apply to the city of Hollister, and it's illegal for the city to ignore state law. Next slide. The city has twice now been told by HCD that they are violating the state law in two letters that they've sent to the city. The letters have specifically found that the city's actions related to the growth management program and in action on impending, on pending housing applications, including the Woodall project, violate state law. Those letters were dated July 29 and May 12. Next slide. Your city council, as your staff has just pointed out, has already initiated a resolution to prezone the Woodall property. A mitigated negative declaration has been adopted for the Woodall property annexation and prezoning, and the property has impacted prezoned under city ordinance to medium-density residential. So the property complies, the annexation request is zoned for medium-density residential housing, and the request to move forward the annexation is consistent with that. Next slide, please. Under SB 330, the city cannot deny a housing project that is consistent with the general plan and zoning, and I just showed you why it's consistent with the general plan and zoning, the city's already prezoned it. The only basis on which you can do that is an adverse impact on public health and safety with no feasible method to mitigate that impact. That's not the case we have here. We received a letter, the city received a letter from the San Benito High School District at the August third meeting, and questioning the ability, you know, to mitigate school impacts. I want to point out that the statutory school fee under the government code is deemed as full mitigation for school impact. The city adopted the mitigated negative declaration for the Woodall property prezoning, finding no unmitigated impacts, including impacts to schools. Next slide. The Woodall project negative declaration analyzed 109 units for the Woodall project, resulting in 18 San Benito High School students from the Woodall project. The Woodall project is actually 98 units, results in a lower number to analyze in the negative declaration, and is deemed to be fully mitigated by the payment of statutory school fee. Next slide. San Benito County letter, San Benito High School District letter of August 3rd recognized this, stating, "We understand that the law does not permit a land use agency such as the city to condition a project approval on a project applicant providing school facilities mitigation in excess of the payment, school, payment of school impact fees." That is the method in which school impacts are mitigated. San Benito High School District has the ability to seek further funding through voter-approved bonds or other state resources. Next slide, please. It's also important to note that SB 330 applies not only to the Apple Housing Project, but also to any required land use approvals or entitlements that are necessary for the building permit. The two resolutions in front of you tonight, approve the annexation agreement and initiate the LACCO proceedings, are necessary for the Woodall project and consistent with the actions the city has already taken to facilitate the annexation and construction of this project. Next slide, please. The Woodall project development complies with applicable objective plan and zoning standards and city and criteria adopted by your city council. There are no unmitigated impacts, and the city is in violation of state law if the city council does not affirmatively vote to approve the Woodall property annexation resolutions. Next slide, please. A denial of this consistent housing development subjects the city to potential fines, penalties, if they fail to support the, if they fail to correct an unsupportable decision, and also an award of attorney's fees if the developer is successful in the court action. Next slide, please. The city must approve the Woodall applications within five hearings. Three have previously happened, and this is now the fourth of the five hearings. City council's continued split vote is a de facto denial, which violates state law. Next slide, please. The city must act to approve the two Woodall applications if the Woodall project is consistent with the general plan and the zoning. Failure to do so violates state law, subjects the city to fines, attorney's fees, legal action, not only by the developer, but also by the state attorney general's office. We ask that you take an affirmative action on this project and move the annexation agreement and, under item F four, move the initiation of the LACCO proceeding, so that the Woodall project can move forward consistent with the actions that the city has already taken to promote this housing project. Thank you.
Hugh Bickel, go ahead.
My turn?
Yep.
Do you have any questions about her presentation?
Nope.
No? Okay. I just wanted to point out just a couple things that we talked about at the last meeting, Alice. Is, I, I really think just blanket refusal to consider any new residential projects as the two no votes have taken, is just, you know, not warranted, in this particular case at least. This is really a nice project. It, we just, last week sold a house to one of this city's firemen, brand-new hire, you know, and at the lowest wage. He can afford to buy one of our houses, a new house. Granted, he'll outgrow the house when he starts having kids and rest of that, and he'll move on to a bigger, nicer house, but at least he can be in Hollister from now, from day one. And if we're having an earthquake or something like that, it's nice to be able to have your emergency response people, even those who are, are, you know, not on duty, to be able to come in and, and service, and having them be able to live here in the city is important. So that's, that's just a good thing I didn't cover last night that I wanted to cover, but I really would hope that the mayor and, and the councilman understand that this, they are required by law to approve this, period. There's no exception, there's no way around this. This is going to get really ugly if we don't move forward in a proper manner than a legal manner. And I can't imagine why a, a mayor of a city and a city councilman are willing to break the law. That's, that's not a good example to our children. By the way, thank you too, but thank you, the mayor, the councilman, and you two both. You've, you're all putting in a whole bunch of your life into serving this city, and it's really appreciated, you know? And you, at the standard of retiring, you put in, what, 25 years serving this city?
About 40 years now.
Forty years now? I wasn't here that.
Planning commission and city council.
But anyway, thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome. Thank you for saying thank you to me. Thank you, Mr. Bickel.
Thank you. Do we have any, any other speakers?
We do, Mr. Mayor. Sean, please go ahead.
Okay. Can you hear me okay?
Yep, thank you, go ahead.
Okay, thank you so much. I'm Sean Tenenbaum, superintendent for San Benito High School District. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, and members of the city council. Appreciate the opportunity to come to for you this evening. At this time, the district is exploring every option available to obtain funding for a future high school site. We have spoken with Hugh Bickel of Stonebridge Homes, and I believe he supports and understands the future needs of the district. We appreciate that conversation greatly. We look forward to scheduling a meeting to further our partnership for the benefit of the community. At this time, the district is not requesting that you postpone the action before you this evening. We look forward to working with the city and the development community, in particular Hugh Bickel, to locate an acceptable school site and obtain additional funding to provide a future high school facilities that will meet the needs of our growing community. Really appreciated the conversation with Mr. Bickel today, and thank you so much for consideration.
I really quick, Mr. Campbell, I can ask you a question if you're still on. Is it still on?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, he's there.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Campbell, curious, how much will the new high school cost to build?
That's irrelevant.
Can you hear me okay, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, I can. How much will the new high school cost to build?
It just depends on the size and the capacity. It can go anywhere from, you know, less than 100 million to 100 and a half to a couple hundred million. It just, it depends on the student capacity, the acreage, the amenities, et cetera, so there's pretty broad range.
And you're currently almost tapped out as far as the number of students at your school?
We're near capacity, yes.
And how much do you have now collected in impact fees to build a new high school?
Oh, uh, not, to build a new high school, we're nowhere near.
How much, how much is nowhere near?
Depends on what size it is.
We're looking at a 1,200 student high school, a 1,400 student high school, Mr. Mayor. We're looking at low over 100 million.
Right, but how much do you have in impact fees collected right now to build that high school?
Less than 5 million.
Less than 5 million, so if it's 100 million, what we have to tax versus it is 95 million to build that school?
Uh, that is correct.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Just wanted to know.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any speaker?
I have a comment, since you did it within public hearing.
Go ahead.
I, I get, did you miss the part where the school directly negotiates with the developer? The city's not involved in negotiating the school impact fees. Oh, what?
I'm just curious, I was just asking.
Yeah, but you're, you're, you're making innuendo. There's a lot of things that factor into funding a high school, and it's not just local impact fees from the city of Hollister. Certainly, you'll acknowledge that it's a regional issue, so there's factors, and there's also school bonds. It's unfortunate that they bonded themselves out of the market, all right? So again, the city does not negotiate with the school district. The school district, under state law, negotiates directly with the developer. That way, the city is not involved in that part of it. Nobody said the city of Hollister was going to be able to fund a high school all by itself in the state limits, and we're not going to get anything done with your stance on growth, so I don't understand your comment. Thank you.
I'm just curious, how much will need to be raised from taxpayers to pay for a new high school? So it's clearly between somewhere between 100 to 150 million dollars from what I heard.
But we're, we're not responsible for that whole amount.
Any other comments?
We do have more speakers, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Keith, go ahead. Go ahead.
I'm for, I'm for, I'm for being on schools, for the project. For practice, like measure and all that, measures, right? I'm saying, I'm saying, they have a website, you, you know, witch.com, should be a website. That's network, network skills. We have to do work for the people. If you want, I know Francisco, the, the, send that out for schools. I'm sorry.
Sir, sir, this is about, uh, annexation, talking about school, that's the first. What is your comment?
I already told Sean about schools, how many dollars? We do these schools and then the taxes and all the tax. I'm for this project because, and then Mr. Bickel or the guy, that guy before wanted to me, he means, so thank you, opposed raising taxes.
I'm sorry. Say that again? I couldn't hear you.
I'm opposed raising taxes.
You're opposed to raising taxes?
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Do we have any other comments?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Peter Hernandez. Peter, go ahead.
Yeah, hi, Mr. Mayor. City council actually wanted to consider speaking on this, but I, uh, listening and paying attention to the presentation, it was really hard to digest because pretty much, I mean, this is, and, and first I want to say with full respect for the mayor, for Councilman Resendez, for honor spent, for Councilman Spencer and, and Councilman Lenore, and I respect what you said, Councilman Lenore, but I don't know how much longer we can allow the state for pretty much thumb our noses, thumb their, thumb their, you know, basically thumb their noses at us and telling us what to do, how to do it and crushing our community. I'm very much about development that's going to produce revenue, you know, business. I'm very much commercial development, but these, you know, you, the fact that we wouldn't pretty much set aside the issues of having the taxpayer front money with new developments of schools, there's a lot at stake here and we, and the idea that we pretty much have to just kowtow to the state is just really heavy. I don't understand it. It makes no sense to me. I'm, I, to a certain extent, I feel like the state has done so much to, to destroy our communities. I feel like at a certain point, I don't know when the, the local leaders are going to just throw their hands at us and we can't keep doing this. You know, we gotta, we gotta direct our own ship and understand what it means to allow developments that pay for themselves that ultimately have results of, so that we know that when there's an issue with our roads, we, we're not somehow turning up, uh, trying to come up with an excuse basically to the public, say we can't afford this. Well, or, or, or sorry, but we, we didn't have enough impact fees to deal with the roads. You know, I mean, we're dealing literally, I, on the county side, there's situations where we have SB one funds that are, that are formulated a certain way and supposed to give us the, the, you know, ultimately the funds to be able to support our roads and then we'll figure there's costs from the assembly of the state now changing that formula, taking away from small rural communities and, and basically giving it to other larger, you know, jurisdictions so that that way they could somehow make sure that they get their votes in come election time and then the, the small communities are out. They're out those resources, they're out those funds, they're, they're out the ability to pretty much manage their own issues. And it's funny because ultimately, all I'm saying is, at a certain point, we have to make the argument that if you're not going to help the state, then fine, just leave us alone, let us manage our own course. And, and yeah, if the housing development can show that it's going to help our community, then awesome, I'm all for it. But, but to allow developments when we know that our road is broken, when there's a lot of issues in our, in our community, it makes no sense to me to just say yes. And, and the idea that we could just say, well, the state said, so we just got to do it. I think that's part of the problem because that's a step, that's everything. They all say the same thing and I feel like at what point we just leave and say, no, we can't keep doing this, it makes no sense. We have to just do something. Maybe it's us or the state. It, it might be a small fish in a big pond, but at least we made a step and at least other people pay attention and who knows, maybe the electorate will finally stand up and say, we can't keep doing this. Um, I'm trying to be consistent and ultimately I feel like there's, there's too much inconsistencies with saying there's just a lot of development, even if it hurts our community, even if it doesn't give us the funds that we need to support our community. It makes no sense to me. Those are my comments, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez.
Thank you, sir. Do you have any other speaker cards? Do we have any other speaker cards?
We do. Um, one more speaker, Salvador Mora. Saul, go ahead.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor and city council. Just like to again maybe inform the community and there was a previous speaker who just spoke, Councilman Board Supervisor Hernandez, that, uh, I don't know if you listened in the last city council meeting, but I also mentioned what the penalty is if the city of Hollister violates this law. This isn't a guideline, this is actual law. It's AB 330. There was case law, there, there was, there's a court challenge to Governor Brown's Housing Act. Unfortunately, the city or county that sued lost. Then when Governor Newsom came into office, he, and with the legislature passing SB 330 and AB 101, they took the court's findings and fees, penalties for cities and counties that do not move forward with approved projects. So there isn't a lawsuit that, that would occur from the state. They, they will oppose fees and they will also appoint somebody to ensure that the projects get continued, whether we like them or not, and they won't get done. The city will have to, the taxpayers will have to cover the fees, not the mayor or Councilmember Resendez. The taxpayers' money is going to go to this and the project is going to continue. Now, I would like, hopefully, Mr. Our, our city attorney, Emerson, can answer the question that Councilmember Resendez asked him last city council meeting, which I was a little disappointed he couldn't answer, which is to answer the question of what will the fines and fees be from the state of California? It's very clear in the law. You look it up, you can Google it. Very easy. It's not a lawsuit. These are fines that, fees that will be imposed. So I do not agree with the state telling us what to do. Unfortunately, it would be irresponsible and reckless for the city to file a lawsuit when there's previous case law. This is a losing battle. All we're going to do is waste our taxpayers' money and the project will go forward no matter what. And again, we'll be short funds. So I, 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 I do empathize with Board of Supervisor Hernandez. I, I don't disagree with him, but unfortunately, this is a law that is passed legally and if we, city decides to not go forward with it, there's, there's heavy fees and I am not willing and I would not like our city council or mayor to put our taxpayer, our hard-earned money and just waste it to take a stand or win votes.
Well, thank you. So in other words, you're for it? Thank you very much.
Why do you say that?
I have no more speakers, Mr. Mayor.
There are motion?
Uh, I have a comment.
No, I'm sorry. We have one more speaker.
I'd like to comment.
Elia Salinas.
Oh, okay. One more speaker? Yeah, I'm after you.
Thank you. Um, so this is a project that should have happened a long time ago and I know that Councilman Lenore does not like to be threatened with lawsuits. Totally get it. Nobody wants to be threatened with lawsuit. But rules are rules and laws are laws and unfortunately, this is where we, this is where we are because we are so far behind and we're, we need to come up to state standards. Now, I remember specifically asking Sean Tenenbaum at a meeting when he was advocating for Measure L funds and the money was going to go to the high school and I said, I asked specifically about the number of students and do we not need a new high school? And he said, no. We got plenty of room, our classes are empty. So I was against Measure L because they have a great sports program, they have a new football field, they got a $65 million swimming pool that only, less than a hundred students, and right now we're in COVID, no one's using that pool. Tenenbaum has been around long enough to know if we needed a new high school, $65 million should not have gone to a swimming pool. The letter he sent to the city via Christine, it said $123 million. I guarantee you, neither Gavlin College nor the school district can ask and get a yes from any voter in San Benito County or the city of Hollister because they're tired of paying bonds and it goes for decades. It's not for a short period of time. I can, I agree with Peter Hernandez, who is speaking as a citizen and not as a supervisor, that we do have SB one money that's going, that's going down south and it's going up north and it's going to counties that are larger than us. And I've said time and time again, we need to be the squeaky wheel in Sacramento so we can get those funds here. We also asked for the citizens for Measure G. So we're getting that money. But we're not here for a new school. We're not here for new, new bonds. You are here tonight to make the right decision for your constituents and not get the city of Hollister involved in a lawsuit. We know what happened with the 400 block. It was delayed and delayed and delayed and it cost us a lot of money to be right exactly where we were supposed to be on day one. Do not let this property that Mr. Bickel has brought forth with to do the same thing and cost us a lot of money. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just quick clarification, the swimming pool is open and it did not cost 65 million to build that swimming pool. Just want to let the public know the facts and information.
What did it cost?
Next speaker, please.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, what did it cost? What did the pool cost?
I have no more speakers, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmembers, do you have any questions, comments?
Yes, uh, what did the pool cost?
I have no idea.
Okay, you have no idea. There you go. Okay, well regarding Mr. Hernandez's comments, I realize that you're commenting from the private citizen. I gotta tell you, it's hard for me not to remember that you're my county supervisor. You seem to object to growth. I bet you better look in your own backyard, I gotta tell you. When I get done with this council, I'm going to have a lot of comment on what's going on in our sphere of influence and the outlying areas of the county. I just can't say it now, but if you're going to shovel that over here to the city, look in your own backyard. You guys are rampant and you're going for it and people are confusing your development with ours. Um, I gotta tell you, if we don't build one more house, the high school's still in a pickle. They're in a pickle and I, I would imagine they're receiving a lot of pressure from the parents for the last decade to build a new high school, a decade or more. They don't have enough room for all those kids that want to be on a team. I know there's been immense pressure to the trustees to build a second high school. Now, now you want to talk about it because your bond didn't pass? I think that you should go to the drawing board, realize the benefit you have of partnering with developers that give you land, they give you land to build your schools as part of mitigation for that. Man, I gotta tell you, I'm pretty impressed with Santana Ranch. That's the kind of thing you can partner with a developer to get done. So please try not to make the developer the enemy. You needed that high school done a long time ago, so let's work together cumulatively to get that impact fee up and see what other funding you can get on the state because the, the voters are done. See what you can get on the state level and partner with the developers and try to plan a high school that's maybe not so extravagant. Uh, and I appreciate your comments tonight, Dr. Tenenbaum. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments from council? Is there a motion undecided?
I move that we adopt resolution number 2020-163 as stated.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Against? Aye. Motion does not carry. We'll move to item F4.
And it'll go to the next meeting?
Thank you, again, thank you, this is the Department. Item F4 is a resolution to initiate last full proceedings and to allow staff to submit an application for the annexation of the property that we were just discussing on Buena Vista, the Woodall property. Um, at this time, with the previous item being continued by time motion to the next meeting, we, as staff, would recommend that this item be continued to the next meeting to follow that item. So not a recommendation for adoption tonight without the annexation.
Thank you. Do we have any speakers on this level? No speakers, is there any questions or comments from council? Is there a motion to continue this item?
I do have Christine's hand up to speak, but she did go six minutes on the last one. I, I reset that. Should I go ahead and give her three?
No.
I, I did reset the timer for her on F3 prior to.
I have a question for the city attorney. What's the difference between this, this, the previous no action and then what's the consequences of a continuance here and not a no action?
Uh, it would be if, if there is a vote and it fails, it'd be a failure and it shouldn't come back. So given that the la, it's so dependent on the last one, I would suggest that you actually open it and take a vote on it, under the assumption that it's going to proceed to the, perhaps we'll proceed to the next meeting.
Thank you.
And to answer your question, Christine, she had 10 seconds left.
Okay. Christine? She had 10 seconds left on her timer from last time. So go ahead, Christine.
Thank you. I, I wanted to clarify that as well. I wanted to keep the, both of the items moving forward, even if it's a continuance. So if your city attorney recommends a vote on this as well, I would, we would ask for that. We, we want them to stay tied together and we want to move the annexation proceeding forward.
Thank you. Any other speakers? Is there a motion from the council?
I know that we adopt resolution number 2020-164 as stated.
Is a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Against? Aye. Motion does not carry. We are going to move to item F5.
Thank you, again, this is the item F5 is for an out-of-jurisdiction surrender request. You did hear this item at the August 3rd city council meeting, but properties in question are located on Hope Press Road and Los Altos Drive. On August 3rd, we received a request from our applicant to withdraw the item and so for their notice, I think that they're looking for possible changes and then we submit to the city. And the item was continued by a tie vote on the motion. So at this time, we would like to again request that the item be withdrawn on behalf of the applicant's request.
Thank you very much. Any speaker cards?
I have no speaker cards, Mr. Mayor.
Any comments or questions from council?
I don't vote, right?
Do I vote?
You have to abstain.
Yeah.
No questions?
Is there a motion?
Do I say it now? I abstain from the vote on this agenda item.
Okay, well you need to remove yourself from the chamber if you're abstaining from the, an item. And probably tell us why you're abstaining.
Do I go back there? Okay.
The applicant's requesting withdrawal of the item.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion?
I think a motion to draw item, resolution number 2020-165. 165.
Are you voting? That's correct. There's a motion, is there a second?
Is, is it not just a consensus to continue an item? Or is it a motion?
It's a motion to withdraw, that's what they requested.
Okay, want them to withdraw or continue, withdraw?
According to the agenda.
Okay, okay, thank you. I'll second that.
Is a motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Against? Motion carries 3-0. Thank you. We'll move to item F6. Bring back Councilor Ms. Spencer.
We're ready, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Let's move to item F6.
Item F6 is our biannual review of our conflict of interest code. Uh, the attached list on the staff report has been reviewed by human resources and um, changes have been made and I'm just requesting that we adopt those positions. as, um, 700 conflict of interest, um, filers and adopt the resolution.
Is there any person from council?
No.
Do we have any speaker, speaker cards on this?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Is there a motion?
I make a motion that we accept Resolution Number 202166 as stated.
Is the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Sorry, I, I think I heard a second. Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Motion carries four oh. We'll move to item F seven.
If you can, Councilor, this is DeMola Saka, the Housing Programs Coordinator. Can you hear me all okay? I, I, my voice was a little...
He's got you very well. Try again?
No. No, it, it's, it's all garbled.
Jamila, do you have it on your computer and your phone?
No, just a computer.
Do you wanna try?
Logging out and coming back in?
Back in?
Yeah.
That doesn't work, maybe you could just call in on the Zoom login channel?
Yeah, yeah, try calling in to, to support. Thank you, yeah, one sec, yeah, yeah.
We'll wait for you, thank you.
I've tried logging back on to my computer, can you hear me now?
We can, thank you.
You don't sound like Iron Man any longer, so that's good.
Oh, that's a bummer, that's kinda, sounds kinda cool. Well, good evening, council. Again, this is Jamila Saka, the Housing Programs Coordinator. Tonight, I am presenting a resolution and MOU related to the grant application through the Community Development Block Grant Response Round One. This funding was made available through the Coronavirus or the Cares Act. That was signed into law March 27, 2020. The City of Hollister is eligible to 101, 151,177 dollars and based on eligible activities, the city is seeking to apply for rental and utility assistance. The City of Hollister also began working with the City of San Juan Batista and San Bernardino County to develop a singular grant application. The goal of the joint grant application is to combine our resources, time, and knowledge to ensure the public receives assistance through a streamlined, singular access point. As requirement of the grant application, a public hearing was conducted via Zoom on August 6th from 4:00 to 5:00 p.m. All three jurisdictions conducted the public hearing together and the number of participants, including staff, was approximately 27 individuals. During the public hearing, staff gave a summary of the grant options and illustrated the goal to use the funding for rental and utility assistance. Members of the public were able to voice their questions, comments, and concerns related to the grant application and use of funding. The individuals who attended the meeting voiced their support for rental assistance. Along with the grant application, you will all, also notice an attached MOU. The MOU is between all three jurisdictions, City of Hollister, San Bernardino County, and City of Holl, and City of San Juan Batista. We are all seeking to apply through one application for the same activities and we intend to share the responsibilities of the program. It's important to note that this is not a competitive grant process, so according to the state, the application, if everything is all, um, all material provided, we will be approved on a rolling basis. This means as reviewed and found eligible, we will receive the grant funding shortly after. Staff recommends approval of the resolution and MOU to allow the City of Hollister to complete a joint application with the City of San Juan Batista and San Bernardino County to provide rental utility assistance for households directly impacted by COVID. Application is due by August 31st, we'll be anticipating it before the deadline. Are there any other questions or comments?
Any questions from council?
No.
Do we have any speaker cards?
I have no speaker cards, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Is there a motion from council?
I make a motion that we accept Resolution Number 202167 as stated.
Is the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Motion carries. Four oh. We'll move to item G one, reports from city council members regarding their committees. Councilmember Lennar?
Uh, okay, I did attend AMBAG meeting, uh, since our last meeting and where they discussed the amended, uh, growth, regional growth forecast. Um, I'll be meeting with them, with planning staff as to try to clarify some of the growth forecasts and their methodology for getting to the forecast, 'cause, 'cause I'm interested in the stuff. Also, you'll, you'll, it's interesting when you go over to the Bay, area of the Bay over there, they have discussions and it's so much different than our discussions because it's... I gotta tell you, I really enjoyed AMBAG. I wanna thank the mayor for placing me on AMBAG because they don't just watch transportation issues and it's all kinds of forms of transportation issues. It's train, it's, it's mass transit, and the buses, it's, it's cars, it's highways. Uh, it, it's, it's railroad that are, that are feeling, uh, rise in sea level. So they discuss a lot of interesting things, but what I didn't realize was they also watch everything inside the ocean. So they're looking at temporary reefs and, um, they, they have some difference of opinions when it comes to dredged materials and I sensed that it was a bit of a hot point for them. Although they conduct themselves very professionally, I'm so proud to be part of that. And, uh, but they do have, they do have a little bit of difference of opinion where the dredged materials should, should land over there. Uh, whether it's, uh, only in the sanctuary or outside and, you know, the AMBAG's recommendation is to let the dredged material also serve some of the areas that need that recreation, uh, the sand, the sea level and the erosion is really going after and has for quite some time. The coastal over here are, are neighbors. And so they're always, they're trying to get that sand built back up. But they have some difference of opinions and, uh, I'm sure that they'll, they'll solve those. But I found it all very interesting. And again, uh, it's been one of my pleasurable thing is to serve on the association of Monterey Bay Area governments. Also, I'm, I'm very intrigued with how they get our growth forecast. I'm, I'm very intrigued how they work with our local COG office. Uh, so I, I look forward to following them just, just a little bit longer. Marty Richman said to me, "We really need to be spot on with those growth forecasts." And then he felt like the last ones weren't quite right because we have such a high base that commutes. 'Cause they bring their numbers on three items, that's housing, employment, and population. And everybody knows we have a large commuter base. Uh, so I wanted to ask them, how do they get to that number? Uh, so I will be meeting and hopefully bring some more information to you. And, uh, again, I appreciate the opportunity. Uh, and I also had a Water Resource Committee meeting. Um, they are, uh, still doing their education as far as water softeners and, uh, water usage. Uh, Sean Novak, as you know, is just, uh, a great water conservation manager. Uh, but the COVID has hampered their, uh, ability a little bit to obviously get to the schools 'cause the kids aren't there. And he's really big on educating them at a young, young age. So soon as they can restart that. Also, they'll start with their big report on the groundwater management. Uh, that's something that has to be done, I think, four or five years, every four or five years. That's coming and it's a biggie. I, I think that I won't have enough time uh, so that hopefully the city will get somebody in there that can participate on that very important plan. 'Cause again, the number one, resources, water. Thank you so much for the opportunity to relay my committee, uh, discussions.
Thank you very much. Uh, councilmember, Vice Mayor Spencer?
Nothing to report.
Councilmember Resendez?
Nothing to report, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Thank you. I'm gonna report from our COG meeting. We had a special COG meeting a few days ago and it was, uh, one of, probably one of the most important meetings we've had because it concerns the widening of Highway 25. The value analysis that was done by a group of engineers that came together over several days. I, and I also participated in, made their recommendations on how we can finally widen Highway 25. Background story on this is, there's a lot of conversation about why haven't we done Highway 25 in the past and money was misdirected and so on, so on, all rumors, of course. The reality was very simple. There was never money to widen Highway 25 because of the incredible cost. Early on in this process, when I pushed for the widened Highway 25, we had many, many conversations about the cost would be. Several people at the time thought it would be no more than $50 million and I kept pointing out that it would be a $300 million project plus because of bonding issues with that. Well, the value engineers came in to look at this because when the first proposal was presented, the cost came in at over $340 million. And being that we only have $240 million to spin on the highway, the engineers came back to figure out a way to make this thing work, changed the plans a bit. And they presented several different options. They gave us six options. Really, of those six, only two widen the highway from San Felipe to the county line. There are four options they did present. A couple of them are just, uh, basically what you would call phasing options. One would be, uh, the phasing of just the overpass or interchange at 25156, which is a $40 million project in itself. The other is only doing a portion of highway from San Felipe to the 156. The other two are the ones we will probably be looking at here. We're gonna be discussing it in another special meeting. But I'm, I am pleased to say that those two other options came in under the, um, well, right at one at 241 and the other one at about 190 or a little less than that. So it was a great job, hi everybody, exciting. It is finally gonna happen, no doubt about it. A lot of work to do on this, but it does prove what happens when we all work together. This is something that was stalled for quite a while and we all came together. So I wanna give all those COG members a big thank you for working so hard. That would be Mayor Edge, San Juan Batista Supervisor Hernandez, Supervisor Del Cruz, Councilmember Resendez. It took a lot of hard work to get us here in this last year and we finally did it. And I'm, I'm gonna be excited to come back in another few weeks to tell you what that final decision is so that we can get started on the next phase of this, the environmental portion, to get moving on the widened Highway 25. So very exciting news, very exciting. The other news that's happening through COG was also the no left turn onto Highway 25 from the balsa that should have started today. But I wanna remind everybody, please do not turn left onto Highway 25 South from balsa to south. Very dangerous and that's why the restrictions are there. During the week, the commute average will increase to seven. And I also wanna remind everybody, please, please do not stop on the southbound off-ramp, the 101 to the 25 at the top of the bridge there. Continue making your left turn, it is very dangerous to stop there and creates a backup traffic. So we're doing a lot of good things, good things are happening. Next step is to do the off-ramp improvements on that intersection also. That's gonna be happening in the next year or two. The circular can is a target, but all these good things are happening. Again, we have to partner, go work together, so very exciting news. We're gonna move on now to informational report from council. Councilmember Lennar?
Well, uh, I, I do wanna reiterate, uh, the left turn off of the old balsa. Um, and probably don't try to find a way around it like my husband. We had a lightning discussion today. I was, I was trying to get him to go a different route. Uh, and it is dangerous, so I hope the, the people take the, heed the mayor's advice and just try to comply. You're gonna get a ticket, nobody wants that for you. Um, also, I want to bring up the, uh, the, uh, recycling company. Integrated Waste Management is really recommending that you really pay attention to your recycling efforts. And they are really messed up when you put in that dirty catch-up bottle. It stops the whole conveyor belt. It's really a costly thing for them. I, I started washing all my things out, catch-up bottles, cat and can. So that nothing goes in the thing that isn't clean, it's really important. Also, they're asking you not to throw any more plastic film. So that's pretty much plastic bag or anything plastic wrap. Uh, because they're, they're obviously, they don't have anywhere for it to all go now and I think that's hooked to China somehow. So they're saying to throw now. Unfortunately, it took them a while to get us to save that plastic and recycle that plastic. I wanted to get the notice and the bill attached to it that no longer do they want any plastic wrap in the garbage, in, in the recycling so far now. Please try to throw that plastic, even though we don't want to, into the garbage until further notice. Um, and let's see what else. Uh, and again, I'd like to lay, uh, integrate the, the waste management to do m- more pickup downtown for all of our added dining and it... The poor city staff, I'm reminded because I go downtown a lot and I don't like garbage and I don't like stained sidewalks and I don't like this. And they get in, they're probably, oh, she's downtown again. 'Cause I also go to the bricks building and that's gonna be a future discussion. The bricks building is deteriorating right before my eyes. So I'm hoping to talk with the mayor, uh, to see, 'cause we agree on some things, to, to tell him my concerns about the bricks building and the inhabitants. And I go there at least twice a week and it's terrible. And I'm so sad because even if they're not using it now, it's gonna be used and it's falling into disrepair. Uh, so I'm hoping we'll be able to bring that forward. And the last item. I hear you, Cardi. I do want a code of ethics. I think maybe what they're saying is that we have, uh, we have a code, we have rules and procedures for the council. But I wasn't aware we had a formally adopted code of ethics. And, and I'm sorry if I didn't know that. Maybe I'm confusing it with the rules and procedures. But I think that Tim Burns brought a beautiful example from the City of Belmont. I read it a few times. I would have no problem agreeing to that. I think it should be brought in back or asked staff to draft up a, a, a co- code of ethics based on the City of Belmont. Uh, it's a beautiful read. I think we should, we should commit and the future councils should commit to that code of ethics. So I'd like to bring that forward for a public hearing and we'll hopefully do that at the next meeting and depending on that, if the city manager recommends so. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Vice Mayor Spencer.
I have nothing.
Councilmember Resendez?
Uh, sure, Mr. Mayor, thank you so much. I didn't have anything to report. But since we're on the subject of the code of ethics and the code of content, I'm wondering what the status is of councilmember, or specifically Vice Mayor Honor Spencer paying back the money for the trip to Washington D.C. Can we get an update on that or have an agenda items have that discuss the next item? I really appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I do wanna, uh, remind everyone, as everyone knows today, school started for, uh, most of our students. High school started a few days, uh, Thursday last week. Everyone, please, it's gonna be hard for all of us. I, I mask every, please be patient with the teacher, teachers, the administrators. It is tough to make this new world happen. I know they're working so hard to do it and I know we can do it together, even like it had some issues with, uh, signing up today again online. So it's gonna be rough. Let's get them a good week. Let's support each other. We'll get through this together. And thank you again to everybody out there wearing their face cover despite this COVID. Our numbers are still high, but we are seeing the numbers come down a bit. We'll, we'll have better ideas this week. So please, everybody, keep it up, let's stay safe. Sam, you're?
Yes, I've got two items. Uh, I'd like you, uh, citizens, to know that your rec department is working on a movies night, so, uh, for, that will include social distancing. Uh, we, we hope to have something out real soon on that one. Uh, the second item is the chip seal. Uh, we, we're asking, uh, the public to be very patient. We are working out with the contractors to, uh, probably correct some of the issues that we've had with the chip seal. Uh, and we just ask that you, uh, give us, uh, hopefully, uh, co- within a week, they, they have a solution. Uh, that's, that, Mayor, thank you very much.
I'm sorry, I said, I said a minute, chips?
Chip seal.
C-H-I-P-S?
Yeah, yeah, it, it, the, the road construction that we've done... Yeah, yeah, the road construction that we've done downtown, sorry.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. City Attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, no statement.
Intra Chief?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, no statement at this time.
City Clerk?
I did want to let you know that I sent you all out an email for the League of California Cities twenty twenty Annual Conference and Expo. And I wanted you all to know that it's a virtual conference. I believe it's only fifty dollars for the entire three days, but that's a long time to be on. I'm sure they're probably gonna have some kind of sessions that make you get up and jump around or do something so you're not sitting there for an eight-hour day. And I think there's a breakout for lunch, they'll have breakout rooms for you guys to do. They'll probably do it up very, very nice, but the link is on that email for you to go ahead and sign up if that's something you're interested in. And that is where I believe we needed the voting delegate from August third so that when you attend that session, you can vote, so just a heads up on that, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, we're gonna move on.
Mr. Mayor, can I just, Mr. Mayor, can I just say one thing? I just want to remind our community that we have cooling stations in this heatwave at the library, so people that need to cool off should come, noon to five at the library.
Thank you. Item G three?
Mr. Kelligrew, are you there? Mr. Kelligrew, please go ahead.
This is J.R. Kelligrew from Monterey Community Power, can you hear me okay?
Yes, thank you, please go ahead.
Great, well, Honorable Council of the City of Hollister, thank you much. Thank you so much for the opportunity to present tonight. This is as part of MBCP's commitment to connect with each one of our thirty-two member agencies within the annual grid presentation, so if you could start the slide deck, please. Excellent, thank you so much. As I mentioned, MBCP is your local community choice energy program. And we are here to help provide you an update as to current events and accomplishments that have been happening. I do want to take a moment to acknowledge the fact that we are in incredible times as you have learned about these potential rolling blackouts. Fortunately, the California Independent Systems Operator did not have to schedule a single blackout in California today. That is a huge testament to everybody that's serving. MBCP is providing a lot of live information that we get either through the California Independent System Operator or through PGV. So we're sending out notifications through our newsletter, email addresses, through social media, as well as through Nextdoor. So really just trying to be a trusted resource to get information out to community members across the Central Coast to help conserve energy, make sure that we don't have to go through any more rolling blackouts. But just to let you know, this is gonna be going on through the rest of the week, so hopefully if the weather dissipates a little bit, we won't have to go through any of the rolling blackouts. But anyway, thank you very much for the opportunity and if you could go to the next slide, please. So who we are, we definitely like to reconnect with each one of our city councils or board supervisors. MBCP did start with humble roots back in twenty seventeen when they established our joint powers authority and that consisted of the sixteen cities within Santa Cruz County, San Bernardino, and Monreal County, as well as the three counties. The city of King City actually launched their own program on their own and the city of Delrayo was the lone city that decided not to move forward. Fast forward to twenty eighteen, we actually launched service for commercial customers in March of twenty eighteen. In July of twenty eighteen, we launched service for residential customers. And due to our great model and opportunities, we actually have expanded pretty significantly to include six cities within the county of San Luis Obispo and virtually all of the communities in the county of Santa Barbara, outside of the city of Santa Barbara and the city of Long Park, which has its own municipal utility. So right now, our joint powers authority comprises of thirty-two member agencies, so that's twenty-eight cities and four counties across the Central Coast region. And we are, as I will highlight in the next slide, moving to a new name, the same great service, but we do see the opportunity to reflect a new name. I did want to highlight our governance structure. So a lot of folks wonder what is MBCP, how does it operate? We are a joint powers authority. We have a policy board of elected officials, an operations board of city managers and county administrative officers, and the wonderful committee advisory council of volunteer community members to help provide input from the community about what MBCP is doing. Our board structure is set up that communities over fifty thousand have an individual seat and then shared seats of committees of under fifty thousand. And right now, as you can see, Hollister and San Juan Batista share the San Bernardino city seat. Next slide. This is the big slide that I wanted to share with, so effective September fourth, we are becoming Central Coast Community Energy, same board structure, same services, but just a new name to reflect our expansive service area right now. We are going through a lot of different kind of media opportunities to let customers know that the name is gonna be changed and that they will see a new name, but again, it's the same agency on their October and potentially November PGV bills that will have Central Coast Community Energy electric generation charges that will replace Monterey Bay Community Power electric generation charges. Next slide. You know, it's tough to sometimes highlight accomplishments at this time, but I did want to just stress the fact that we are in a very good financial position. That's gonna help us pursue a credit rating, but also the fact that we're really committed to reindust locally in the region, whether it's through contracts or opportunities. We did work with Shipper Design to help review our website, I know that's a local business in San Bernardino County. And we've also kind of grown our operations subset we are hiring right now. There are some great employment opportunities at MBCP moving forward. And we do have at least contracted for eight hundred thousand, it's probably closer to a million dollars of contracts with local vendors. Next slide. COVID nineteen, that the pandemic is first and foremost on everybody's mind. Our board acted swiftly back in April to enact our rate deferment program, which actually reduced every single customer's rate by fifty percent for the months of May and June. And that equated to about twenty-two, a little over twenty-two million dollars of financial relief for all customers. So you'll see the bullet points that, you know, we helped reduce bills by about six and a half million dollars for residential customers, eleven million to commercial customers, and over five million to agricultural customers. And we will actually, it's a rate deferment, it's not a complete reduction, that over the next eighteen months, we will by a marginal amount just kind of bring that revenue back inside of MBCP just so that we can keep, continue our fiduciary responsibility of our customers and our board. Next slide. Big update on energy procurement, here's a snapshot of the new and existing renewable energy contracts we've entered into. What that means is we've actually inked over one point, I think, four billion dollars worth of contracts and that will serve about thirty-five percent of our annual electricity supply for our customers. I bring this up because we actually are evaluating a new procurement strategy or energy supply strategy that will help actually invest more money back in the state of California to bring up new renewable energy projects. But we actually can do that more affordably than our current policy, right, or our current strategy. We are having a wide variety of conversations with stakeholders over the next few weeks, so I will certainly circulate some information to the city council in case they want to join this private discussion with our member agencies and staff about what this needs and what it's gonna look like in the future. Next slide. Energy programs, this is a really great hallmark opportunity for us. We allocate about three percent of our gross revenue to focus on electrification, fuel switching, and resiliency. Some of our really great programs that we've released, one, we actually had a grant program to help support electrify affordable housing in multi-headed dwellings across the Central Coast. We actually had an oversubscription within the first day, so that we had to actually increase the amount of funds by about ten percent. We released a school bus electrification program in partnership with MBAR, the Air District, and we actually are gonna help support six school buses to become fully electric. And then most recently, we released an agricultural electrification grant program, which funding is still available for ag businesses in San Bernardino County. Really helped do a market research on how ag businesses are looking to help electrify, reduce costs and reduce greenhouse gas emissions in their operations. Next slide. Another great opportunity for our public sector, and it's starting to build up through the private sector, is our uninterrupted power supply fund. Now, this is a low-cost financing opportunity for the public sector, whether it's city or county governments, public schools, public hospitals, or public water and wastewater districts, to be able to fund backup power supply for critical facilities in light of the public safety and power shut-off. You know, we all, you know, did experience some sense of rolling blackouts this past Friday or over the weekend. And this is another opportunity for us to provide funding for folks to be able to get that backup supply in case, you know, the grid goes down and you can keep those critical operations going within the public sector. Next slide. I did want to provide a quick snapshot for the city of Hollister. The city has about almost twelve thousand accounts enrolled with us, has a strong enrollment of just about eighty-eight percent. And I did want to highlight that the city of Hollister's own municipal accounts with us have saved about thirty-three thousand dollars off of their PGV bills since you enroll service back in March of twenty eighteen. And then the community at large, all of your residents and businesses, have actually saved upwards of seven hundred thousand dollars since we started service back in twenty eighteen. So I did want to highlight these figures to show you that we are driving financial value to the customers that are enrolled with our service, more so than PGV has over the last few years. Next slide. And I just wanted to wrap up that as we move towards unifying the Central Coast under this great community choice energy agency, we have set up a satellite office in San Luis Obispo to help support with our recent customer engagement. We are setting up an annual meeting and we certainly would love for the city of Hollister to join us next year when we set that up. As I mentioned earlier, we're moving to a new name on September fourth, but also really kind of looking at a more thoughtful and informative outreach and engagement strategy about how to inform the programs and what type of investment that's bringing back to our communities. We've also set up a bi-monthly advocacy roundtable to really kind of get down into the nitty-gritty with advocates and really discuss what's coming down the pipeline in terms of communities and how MBCP can help inform our approaches based on that. Next slide. So on that note, I conclude my presentation. Here's some great opportunities to stay connected with us. I certainly will send a follow-up email to kind of outline what's happening in terms of, you know, the grid and to help you inform your constituents about it, but also to help sign up for our newsletter and board agenda notifications, as well as an invite to Friday's discussion about the new power strategy that we are working through all of our boards. So again, truly appreciate the opportunity to connect with you all tonight and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, is there any questions from council?
I have a comment, if you don't mind. I, I want to tell you, Mr. Kelligrew, I'm very, very happy as a city of Hollister resident. I'm sorry. I want to tell you, Mr. Kelligrew, I'm very happy as a resident to have your power company over here. I have an old house and the PGV electrical would just kill me in the summertime to the tune of six hundred dollars, mostly for a little bit of air conditioning. You have been a godsend and you answered all my questions tonight because I wanted to know how many people were enrolled in the city of Hollister. It was a little more than I guessed, so I'm really happy to see that. And then I was gonna suggest maybe you take another run at that outreach to get those last people on there, the last thirteen percent. I always say good things, people say, oh, we don't want that. I go, yes, you want that, it's more affordable. So you can let Mr. Abashi know that I'm very thankful for his leadership and appreciate and wish you all the best and thank you for putting this together for us, this important thing. And thank you for your presentation tonight as well.
Thank you very much, council member.
Any other questions or comments?
No.
I do, I do have a quick question for you. Early on, when this started, the partners put in the seed money to make this all happen and we were gonna be paid back this seed money, when is that going to happen or has it happened?
Yeah, thank you very much, Mayor, that's a great question. So we actually, yeah, there was a line of credit or a loan that was given out back in, I think, late or twenty seventeen, and that was actually paid back within the first six months of operations. So by September of twenty eighteen, it was paid back.
Awesome, I did not get the update, but good job. And it seems to be working, I think, much better than anybody expected, so great deal.
Thank you very much, Mayor.
Do we have any speaker parts?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Keith Snow? Keith, are you there, please go ahead. Keith?
Keith, it appears that you're on mute.
Keith, unmute yourself, go ahead. Keith? Okay, sorry, Mr. Mayor, I have no other speakers.
Thank you for the report, we'll move now to item G four.
Thank you, Mayor. This item, we understand that at tomorrow's Board of Supervisors meeting, they're gonna discuss at one part, or during their meeting, we believe it's during their COVID session, that they're gonna see if there's a general consensus for a face covering ordinance. And I am asking if I can get a consensus, if the board does agree to a consensus that we would bring a face covering ordinance also to the city. So I'm trying to see if we have a consensus. Consensus for this.
Any questions from council?
No.
I think this conversation, city manager's gone back and forth so many times with the county, I think it was important for all of us to partner together early on to make this happen, it didn't happen. If the county would like to do something and willing to do something, of course, I would absolutely support it on the city side also. I think that's one of the big steps we missed early on in this. I think a lot of the citizens have been doing a great job as far as wearing face covers in public, so that has been, I think, one of the reasons that we're starting to see the numbers start going back down. I'm gonna cross my fingers on that. But I'm supportive if the county's gonna commit to something, if we move forward tonight and commit to something. I don't think we can have something happen in the city and not the county, or back and forth, we're all over the place and it's confusing the public. So I think it's up to the other members of the council on how they feel. Anybody else have any comments on this?
Well, I could see why you might go that route, but if you don't mind, I'd like to see the ordinance first. They're just saying tonight they would like to present an ordinance, so I can't give you a decision until I study the report and read the ordinance. Then I'll be able to answer which way I'm gonna go.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, any other comments?
Thank you.
Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, I'm really not in favor of having ordinance come back, I've gotta be honest with you guys. I support wearing masks one hundred percent, without a doubt. But I just want to remind you that we did try this early on and I supported it then, I supported the ordinance, the fees, everything, and we couldn't come to an agreement. So I don't think that we're perfect, but I've gotta be honest that most people are complying. The businesses and downtown and whatnot, and they're very mass. Yes, there's a small group encouraging people to go against what the medical professionals are telling us to do, but I don't think that's a real problem. For me, I think the families interacting or the backup parties seems to be quite a big problem. I'm not very happy with the lead that the county has taken on this issue. You know, they are in charge of the public health department and they want to adopt the ordinance. And I've heard it's like just going to incorporate the unincorporated areas of the county. To me, that's just, it's kind of an insult, kind of a joke. I think we're all responsible adults, you know, the issue's just been so polarized, it's gotten very ugly. I'm not interested in adding to that goodness at all. I think that having people turn on their neighbors, using our city resources, it can get really ugly really quick. So at this point, I've just gotten so out of hand. I do support wearing masks a hundred percent. I think that most people are making logical decisions on how medical professionals advise us to fight a pandemic, but I'm not interested in adopting an ordinance at this time, enforcing mask advice, and I wouldn't even entertain the idea of having that discussion here at the council. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Is there any speaker parts?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Ben Coffey. Ben, go ahead. Unmute yourself. Ben?
Hello?
Yep, we can hear you. Please go ahead.
Welcome, hello. Mr. Mayor, City Council, Supervisors, it's a pleasure. I applaud, I applaud you for your stickutiveness and your commitment. It's been a long night. I am not in favor of any fines or mandatory masks.
We're not discussing.
And there's a lot of people with medical conditions that would have issues complying. And I think the center gave two points to two groups and it causes a lot more issues as the city comes in, uh, growing, I would say. And, yeah, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Courtney Evans. Courtney, go ahead.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Please go ahead.
Perfect. I am calling in to speak for our group, hashtag OpenSBC, that has over eight hundred members and growing. Every time this specific agenda item is on for our county supervisors meetings, the numbers of our community, your constituents, are calling not in favor of an ordinance or a enforcement to our citizens. I would also like to advise against who is going to be, um, who is going to be liable for if something happens. I do not require masks in my business and I will not. There is a freedom of choice and reasons for people not wearing them. That is not anybody else's business. So to enforce and divide our community even more with, um, a mask ordinance is absurd. We have called, we spoke, and the numbers are very clear that the public is not in favor of a mask ordinance. So I ask that we put our attention to more important things and stop trying to police the people of our community and this country. Thank you. And I'm also a little upset that this was put on the agenda so late. It's almost nine thirty and it's a very important issue. This, I mean, if this is an emergency as we're still calling it six months later, don't you think that this should have been the first item on the agenda so that everyone in the community could have a part in the conversation? Thank you.
Keith Snow? Keith, go ahead.
Yeah, last, uh, my God, sort, sort of thing, just give me, uh, I'm, I'm, I'm for the mask. Mask saves a life. COVID- nineteen, really, uh, this year's, uh, be a last loss. Even doctors, nurses, a physician, a city. And that we to all recommend, uh, I'd just be pointy. Uh, not only pointy, pointy myself, but I'd go out with, but I used to have to do like I used to with this, me people and all. I stay home most of the day because for a fact, the results of COVID- nineteen, we just wasted bins, the lives are at risk. And we put more on, on with the cost of your life, life pressures. It's like sort of thing, uh, let me give that sort of, I'll start studying, it's, it's in that sort of thing. That's third party charge. For change me, I want to put that to you, Mr. Mayor, and see where it's, uh, good to put it. So, uh, third party charge. I'd be dealing, uh, my people, they're low, now I'm going to say that, I think I'd be, we miss my children. My God, do you hear me? Why don't you hear this? This, uh, don't come as a third party charge, that's for change me.
This is, uh, sorry, sir, sorry, that was the other item. This is only about.
I'm not being, 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 Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, I know. This is about this item, sir?
I know, I'm, I won't pay your attention. I'm going to repeat it.
Well, I'm sorry, but that item passed already.
I know, it's getting on the, I'm going to end up.
Yeah, well, somehow I've been waiting for you. We did not hear it.
No, no, nobody can be there.
There, we're, you have to speak on this.
I know, I got to eat on, uh.
Okay, sir. Mr. Snow, again, this is on this item. Can't mix items in these conversations. Thank you. Do we have any speakers?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Elias Salinas?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. So I am obviously on the side of wearing masks and I agree with Councilmember Sendez that the majority of what's spreading this is the fact that large members are gathering. There's large numbers are gathering and they're not wearing masks. And we, you know, the horror stories is someone knows that they're positive, but they want to go to the party and they, they don't tell anybody and they end up showing up and getting other people infected. I'm sorry to hear that he's not for a fining. You know, the thing is that it's kind of weird, humans, you know, who, I don't know what makes this tick. If, if it's not a deterrent enough and Councilman, you know, Lenore, Councilmember Lenore has gone through this, that she got sick, it's not something that's easy. And, and if the deterrent is, it's not enough for them to say, "You can get violently ill." But not only that, you, actually, it's fatal. It can be fatal. And that's not a deterrent enough. So an ordinance with a mask, and I was in Monterey County, I was in Pacific Grove and I was running in PG, and you have to have a, have to have a mask. You can't gather, you can't even sit on the grass in Pacific Grove Carmel because of, of large crowds and you must wear a mask. And it's, as soon as you enter the city of Monterey, every single city there has got the signs that you're going to get a ma, you're going to get a fine and it's a hundred dollars. This, I know that Velasquez, I'm sorry, Mayor, you, you came up with an ordinance. I don't know how you came up with an ordinance and it was given to, it was written when it didn't come before the council. Maybe it was because you were under this emergency and that's how you directed council or the staff to write the ordinance. I, at the time, did not feel that it was well-written. It was not well-thought-out and it was a thousand dollar fine. My argument was that you wanted a mask ordinance, but you didn't want to, you didn't want to give the masks out. The people had to go out and get the masks. The county came up with a mask ordinance. They gave out the masks for frees, for free. Now we have an ordinance with the county and they're saying it's a hundred dollar fine and it adds up. So I believe that it's well-written. I would like to see a couple of the council members get together with the Board of Supervisors and come up with something together so it's enforced like it is in Monterey County. It's Monterey County and it's cities in Monterey County. You do not have to reinvent the wheel, be able to work together and get something done. The numbers are not decreasing. The numbers are actually increasing. We have ten in the hospital today, two that are in ICU. We had three in ICU last week and that's gone, that's about the only thing that's gone down. So please reconsider working together with the county to come up with something.
I, I want to add, I want to add just to, okay, I'm sorry. I, I just want to say that we have an eight percent positivity rate. That says it all. Don't look at so much the numbers. Look at the positivity rate. We are going backwards. You are not going to kick this thing without high of a positivity rate. I'm not saying anything yet about which way I'm going to go. But you see, I got the mask on and I had the COVID. And here's what scared me about the COVID. I don't want to ever have to think that I might give it to somebody else. And I stress more hard on that than having the COVID. I don't know what folks don't get. You want to be responsible for a family member dying? I don't. So we'll discuss it at a future meeting.
Okay, was there any other speakers?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Jessa.
Before we go, let me make sure we clarify something. I think the speaker said we were going to charge a thousand dollar fine. That is absolutely untrue. That was never the fine. It was up to, and that was still to be worked out for the first fine, second fine, and third fine. So that's completely untrue. We've tried many times to work together with different partners. It's a shame it couldn't happen at the time. Remember that person being against it for whatever reason. But we need to keep working together as a community to at least slow this or continue to slow this virus down. It's going to be a lot of work and a lot of people. And I, I, I just wanted to hear a business owner make the comment that their customers, their business does not wear face covers and they don't think that it has a big deal. It is a big deal and it's sad when somebody can put the lives of one of their customers at risk. Go on to the next person, please.
Jessa Frazier? Jessa?
Yes? I'm here.
We can hear you. Please go ahead.
My name is Jessa Frazier. I lived, um, I've lived in Hollister for about seven years and it's been interesting to get to know the community, but I, I have to say, I cannot believe that this would actually be something that you would be fining people for. I am firmly against fining citizens for not wearing face covering. At this time, going around and looking through stores, I am not seeing anyone without a face covering. It's now nearly a hundred percent of clients, but in every store I've been to look locally. And my big concern on this one is how do you monitor this? Once you begin to put in your code enforcement, you're using city finances to do code enforcement, are you going to be testing the material, the thickness, how many layers? Are you going to be testing the fit of a type of a face mask? How it's worn? If it falls down below a nose, do you have three seconds to pull it back up before you get fined? Has this all been thought out? Because these are concerns that need to be addressed. Are you going to intend to expend this and fine people for not wearing masks inside their homes, which has come up this week across the country in various cities? What about those that are medically unable? Those with breathing difficulty or a mental health disorder and panic issues? Are, what is, what is going to be the, the workaround or the ability to work with and support those with mental disabilities? And if not, I, I would caution that that opens the city up to high lawsuits and that needs to be addressed before a lawsuit is brought against the city. We don't have the money for that, is what I'm hearing. And, and then you find a mask being worn because the type, my mom was actually told she couldn't wear one into an office and she is at one of the highest risks of contracting this virus. And that the N ninety-fiveness wouldn't, would be protecting her, but she's not allowed to protect herself because she was irresponsible to protect other younger, healthier people. Are we going to fine those who refuse to stay socially distanced? Because since people started wearing masks, now they are walking so close to me that although I will go out and around in a time to give that social distance, no one else is respecting that. This is unfounded scientific guess that these masks are affecting the, the great health. We hope, we think that they help some, but even Dr. Fauci admitted that a double-blind study would not be ethical now to have people not wearing it and hoping that they get the virus to prove that masks cover, that they work to the degree that we hope. I'm also wondering if, um, we really want to violate personal freedom to this level? So the fact that you are no longer allowed to care for your own health, that you are now expected, as if you step outside your house to cover your face? I cannot understand why you would choose to violate the personal autonomy of your citizens over this. Let's think it through before we put our.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Before I continue, someone who's already spoken has got his hand raised again. You're able to speak once on, on each issue? So if, if we're not calling on you, that's why. Our last speaker is Sal Mora.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and city council members. I'd like to say that I do, when I do wear a facial covering when I visit, uh, when I go to businesses, doesn't matter what type of business it is, I, I just choose to wear it. Mostly because, you know, I see the signs outside the door, so I'm not going to give the business owner a hard time. I, I don't care to wear them, but I'm not going to give the business owner grief. If I choose to frequent a, an establishment that does not require facial coverings, that, that's my choice. And I believe that's, you know, that's, that's every individual person's choice to make. When I go shopping, doesn't matter which, which grocery store I go into, at Target, I go downtown to restaurants, I see people wearing the facial coverings. Very rarely do I see someone not. So I, I get a personal experience of noticing that most of the community is wearing some sort of facial covering. I, I think I'd agree with, um, fining our citizens over the facial covering issue. You know, do some research. This is an issue a century ago and it's a century, and it's an issue today. I, I just, I'm not for it. I think people can take their responsibility in their own hands and make their own choices. For us to police this, we don't have the resources. It just doesn't make sense. Now, we're going to turn the tables against each other. It's really all against this. People are disrespecting each other, people on both sides, people that have friends on both sides. And, and, and it's not nice. And, you know, I think we should be adhering to this. And, you know, especially not to, if the city is going to go forward, definitely do not go and try to revisit the earlier ordinance proposition where we're fining people up to a thousand dollars in or jail time, which is ridiculous. When we're releasing prisoners from our jails, we, we, we shouldn't consider staying someone to jail for violating a, an ordinance, facial coverings, which is ridiculous. You know, again, I just hope that we do the right thing. People are responsible. Yes, I understand our numbers are going up, but there's certain reasons for that. Stay away from those large gatherings and probably be getting better. I'm not a big believer in, you know, everyone telling us what to do, but, you know, especially if we have an opportunity, what we're not being forced to is not a law to, to do this. I don't think we should be creating ordinances that restrict our freedoms. Thank you.
I have one more speaker, Mr. Mayor. Peter Hernandez. Peter, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, we call this here and then City Council, Sharon as resident of San Bernardino County, even as a business owner who's seen the elements of what it means for the public, hopefully we have to. The majority of, you know, most folks who are complying, if there's ever any issue, it's usually, oh, I forgot my mask or it's something completely unintentional. But if you think about it, I mean, we, we are technically an, obviously a local leaders, to a certain extent, to direct the conversation, to unite the meeting, not to divide. Right now, we literally, you know, the state has been saying, I keep questioning a lot, uh, what is the intent of this governor and the state when they botch rules left and right? I mean, to a certain extent, public health is taking up the pieces and I feel bad for public health because I know that they're doing the best that they can. They implement rules that really change every other day. You know, from, uh, you know, indoors could be shut down and then all of a sudden it's outdoor and all of a sudden it's shut down again. It could be on the street now. Churches aren't open. You know, it's, you know, a lot of the issues that were given was with mental health, with suicide. It was a friend, actually, of the family that committed suicide. We just live in the middle of this and because of, and I can speak to that. And we speak to a lot of numbers when it comes to, and again, the positivity rate, you know, it's technically all, all it is is simple math. It's how many people got sick in that day and how many people took the positive of that. I think it basically discards the actual reality because it completely excludes those that still were potentially at risk with some basically folks that didn't get this virus. So it changes the perspective, divides the community. You have folks that are basically policing each other like, like, uh, the previous people mentioned. I, you know, as a business owner, I get, I talk to plenty of businesses that are very frustrated, who are very much about being compliant and they're saying, you know, I'm trying to do the right thing and they don't get why all of a sudden they have a customer literally yelling at them when one person walked in and they didn't see that they didn't have a mask. And somehow, you know, they're supposed to basically go after these people and if, if the business owner doesn't go after them, then that customer is going to go after them. I guarantee all it's going to do is going to divide our community. You know, to a certain extent, it's going to kill it. All it's going to do is weaponize the community because then now they're going to have a reason. They're going to say, "Well, I can get someone fined a hundred dollars. I will get them." So we can go ahead and go after. The majority of the public was, was not adhering to, to the masks and all that stuff. Even the folks that don't, don't agree with the masks, they say, "You know what? I'll just stay away from you." Even the folks that don't agree with the masks, who say, you know what, I'll just stay away from you. Right? Because they don't want to deal with the issue, they might not have a mask on, but they'll keep distancing. And the doctor, to reiterate, ultimately, the doctor has always said that priority one, social distancing, not a mask. A mask is only secondary. It's actually, it's intended as to say, well, you can't social distance, then the mask comes into the equation. I just pump the public up a lot, and they reiterate, yes, social distancing is your number one. So what's the purpose of a mask for, when they do nothing besides, why the community? Find people, and even possibly businesses, for someone going after them or something. You know, there are plenty of businesses together, telling me that the, hold on, you know, there's a report now, we put out about all these.
Mr. Hernandez?
And my business.
Mr. Hernandez?
I do nothing wrong. I, you know, I don't like to do that.
Mr. Hernandez, your time is up.
But nonetheless, my staff is wearing masks, they're doing the best.
Mr. Hernandez?
You know, I follow all the rules, but it doesn't matter. You know, there's, at the end of the day.
Your time is up.
Fearful, or gonna use this as a tool? And I don't think that's fair to the general public. We need to come up with tools as leaders to unite the community, not to divide it.
Mr. Hernandez, thank you. I have no more speakers, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Any other comments or questions from the council?
Thank you. My hand is, are fine.
Lord.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, can you hear me?
Go ahead, sir, go ahead.
Thank you. I saw your mic, thank you. I want to be clear that I'm one hundred percent for wearing masks. I've gotta make that clear. My concern is the lack of resources, the division, and how are we gonna implement this? That's what bothers me. I've gotta be honest, I was very shocked and taken back to hear a local business owner and a person that's running for local office admit to being against wearing masks or contesting to wear masks. I personally feel that's highly irresponsible, scary and sad. I'll be real honest with you, it makes me very uncomfortable. But my question to, like, our staff is, what are we doing? We just, we said, somebody just said that they're not enforcing in their business, which resides within our city. What are we doing as a city to enforce that part of it? What are we doing, what is the county doing to enforce that part of it? I guess the point that I'm trying to make is, if we're not gonna do anything about that part, how are we going to enforce it on a bigger scale? That really does concern me. I don't know if it's something that we should be taking on at this point. It's gotten very ugly, very political. And I just hope that people will make better choices, you know? They'll be responsible, listen to the medical, you know, people that are advising us. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from the council?
I'll make one last statement, and I want to be perfectly clear too. I've been promoting the face covers since the very beginning, since the very beginning. And I pointed out, if we do this, we can slow this virus, so we can control this virus. If we can control this virus, we can get ourselves reopened. We lost a major, major opportunity in April. April tenth is my back to do that. It's, to hear people still purposely misleading the public by saying there was a thousand-dollar fine in jail, when they actually know that's absolutely not true, is disappointing. And then to hear them say, I don't think they're good, I don't wear them, I won't wear them in my business, I don't repart my business, the public's wearing, is the exact reason, the exact reason that we are still closed in a lot of places. And it's a shame. When will we learn to work together to protect each other? By the simple, simple action of wearing a face cover to help each other and get through this? Because until this virus is gone, no matter what we do, businesses are gonna be slow, they're gonna be hurting. And it's disappointing that the choice we made was based on people that were misleading the public. Of course, face covers make a difference. Of course, social distancing makes a difference. And of course, watch and manage make a difference. It's a combination of all those factors that can beat this virus. This virus cannot survive if it can't jump to the next person. That's what I've been saying over and over. We've heard every story out there, people killed this, this is a hoax, no big deal, face covers do nothing, on and on and on. And here we are, six months later, still dealing with the virus that we could have beat within a month, had we all chosen just to work together and do something so simple as wearing a face cover. I'm always in favor of wearing a face cover. It's a shame we can't get there now, for all these reasons I mentioned earlier and all these complaints we're hearing. It's a shame we can't work together to protect each other. And that's where we're at, unfortunately, as a society. So City Manager, I don't hear a consensus as far as moving forward because I quite frankly don't believe the county is gonna be able to pass an ordinance. And if they're not gonna be able to pass it, how in the world are we gonna be able to pass it or enforce it? That's just the reality now, and that's what I see happening. So I don't think we have a consensus unless I'm hearing three council members say something different.
I just thought we were here to discuss the opportunity that we were gonna bring back an ordinance. And a report.
It was too fast. If we were in consensus to have the City Manager order that to the county so they pass it, we would work with them on the ordinance together. But if we don't have a consensus.
What's the recommendation saying?
We have to report back to the county that there is not a consensus at the city to move forward.
Can you read the recommendation for me?
It certainly won't support that.
Thank you, sir.
Recommendation is that staff is seeking consensus and direction from council.
For, for?
To move forward with an introduction of a face covering administrative fine ordinance on September eighth.
Introduction of an ordinance, that's when you vote on it, after you review the ordinance.
Right, but we have to have a consensus to vote on it.
Yeah, well, I'm, yeah, yeah, I understand that. So I'm with you. I'd like to consider, I'd like the chance to consider an ordinance.
I believe the reason.
Okay, so, all right.
Councilmember Spencer, in favor of considering an ordinance?
All right, whatever you guys want.
I'm, yes, I would like to work things out. I'd like to know how it's going to be done and who's gonna enforce it. I don't like the fines, period. But, yeah, we could talk about this and work something out, and work something out with the county.
Well, let's be clear, though, there will be fines if something does pass, so.
If we go that route.
You're not in favor of that, it's better to say that now, than to get to the point of working on something, not passing anything.
Ignacio, if I, if we work with the county, we can talk about the fines. They don't have to be a hundred, two hundred, and five hundred. We can go further, or just make it a one-hundred-dollar fine, like Monterey and everybody around us.
I'd like a report from Monterey County.
I think I'm making it clear. I think I'm making it clear.
From you saying yes, then there will be consensus tonight.
There is a consensus.
I'm interested in information from Monterey County on their program and how they're implementing that. So I am interested to see that.
Okay, thank you, guys. So it sounds like there is a consensus, City Manager, and we can move forward.
Okay, will do.
Thank you.
Doesn't hurt to discuss.
All right, everyone.
No, I have no problem.
Let's get to, there is H-I-J-K, there's no business. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion's in favor.
Aye, aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, everyone, and good night.
Thank you, good night.